Okay, well, we should make, there we go. The end. Okay. Okay. We'll move to item four on the agenda, which is the public forum. Is anyone in the audience like to speak before the city council? This is your opportunity to come forward and address the council if you have any questions or comments you'd like to make. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item five point one is the approval corrections of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held November 26, 2019, and the special meeting that was held on November 26, 2019. Item five point two, adoption of the finance resolution number 19-023, the schedule of bills. Item five point three, approve the 2020 waste haulers license for waste management. Item five point four, approve the on sale and Sunday liquor license for LaZoya LLC doing business as Casadotti's Restaurant. Item five point five, approve the following licenses contingent upon submitting the required paperwork. Item five point five A, four massage licenses, one for the Pebble Spa, Masaba Therapeutic, Laurentian Divide, and Ah Massage. Item five point five B, one kennel license for grooming by Jane. Item five point five C, three secondhand goods licenses, Goodwill, Twice As Nice, and Power Play Sports. And finally, item five point five D, one pawn broker license for North Star Pawn and Gun. Item five point six, approve the tobacco license for Dennis Yorzak doing business as The Nuzette. And item five point seven, approve the following travel requests which are budgeted in the 2019 budget. Item five point seven A, the fire department, Chris Clark, the fire marshal, and Jake Keel to attend the campus fire and life safety code class February 1st and 2nd, 2020 in Duluth at a total cost of $100. Item five point seven B, Chris Clark and Jake Keel, one city staff member, to attend the study review for code enforcement officer testing, January 10, 2020, in Eagan, Minnesota at a cost, total cost of $100. And item five point seven B, the police department, Jason Picard and Noah Burr, to attend the foundation instructors trainer, March 15 through the 20th, 2020, in Edina, Minnesota, at a cost of $1,450 each. And the foundation instructor trainer is the use of force training in which an officer trains other officers in the proper use of force in compliance with Minnesota State law 609.66. That is the consent agenda item that's on the schedule today. I'm looking for a motion from the council moving forward.
Also move the consent agenda.
Contention agenda moves for approval by councillor Birbu. Is there support?
Oh, support?
Support by councillor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item six, appearances. There are no scheduled appearances this evening, but once again, those who are in the audience, if you'd like to come and speak before the city council, address the council in any way cheerful for me, welcome, come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item seven, which is unfinished business. Item seven point one, review the request for proposal for the Benai, excuse me, the Benai Abraham Museum. This has been an item that's been on our agenda for quite a while. As you, as people may be aware, the Benai Abraham Museum is a former synagogue that is no longer a place of worship. We've been approached by the Friends of the Benai to, to take ownership of this by, by the Friends of Benai to convey the property over to the city of Virginia for use as a community center. We've had several meetings and discussions both at the council level, and we've had a consensus from our city staff and some information from our park and direct, park and rec director, Brian Silver, regarding the costs associated, the annual costs with this project. Now, the Benai Abraham Museum, the Friends of Benai, has offered to convey the property over to the city of Virginia with a, I think it's a $54,000 stipend to go along with that and for us to use it as a community center. After talking with staff and some discussions with some of the, at the council level and with the, with park and rec director, and I think there is a recommendation from the Park and Recs Commission, which is not here today, but their recommendation is that the city of Virginia not take ownership of that and that, so moving forward, we have drafted a request for proposal. And at a meeting with the Benai, Friends of the Benai, we talked about helping them try to find a way in which to keep the history of the museum moving forward and finding someone to take ownership or take control of that to be utilized in a manner that, that respects the history of the museum and carries forward the traditions of, of the historical value of that facility. Now, in our, in our last committee of the whole meeting, we talked about, about the RFP. And within that RFP was a, is a, is a, is a statement about the city procuring the property moving forward and to find a partnership with the city in order to accommodate the, having that facility being vetted and monitored and maybe utilized as a community building. I think that we talked about at the meeting that should we, I said, the decision today is to look at the RFP, the request for proposals. And I think our city administrator, Britt C. Bendis, has sent a recommendation to the city council about the city's involvement as far as the conveyance and ownership of this property, striking from that RFP, the ownership, that the city would take ownership, but continuing to assist the Benai Abraham and try to find a partner to keep this facility operating. So I think what's on the agenda today is the continuous discussion, look at this proposal, determine if this RFP is acceptable to the elected body here, the council, and if we want to move forward or not. And so there, we have, really have two options here is to, to, to take upon the recommendation of our city administrator and make an adjustment so that the city is not taking over the property and helping the Benai Abraham try to find a partner to operate that facility in the future or to sever ties with the Benai Abraham and respectfully advise them that the city will no longer be involved in this and they would have to seek other alternatives in which to find a partner in that regard. So I think that's where we're at right now, just a history for the community. Did you have any additional comments about that, Britt? Okay, so we'll move on to the city council for additional discussion, and I see councillor Johnson's light on. Councillor Johnson?
So I was unable to attend the last Tuesday's meeting where that was discussed at length, but through the miracle of YouTube, I was able to sit and watch and re-watch the entire discussion a couple of times. And so here's where I stand on this. One, I'm frustrated that, my understanding is that, Britt, you sent two drafts to the group prior to, and neither one of those was acceptable, and they sent back this draft with the language in it. That frustrates me because at the meeting we held previous to that at the retired synagogue, those of us there were very clear about the city not having interest on, on several levels. And that comes from the recommendations of staff and the, the cost and all those things. So that was very frustrating to me that we tried twice to help them, time, staff time and effort, and they sent back something that was not what the understanding was. So I respect everything about the building. I respect its historical significance. I'm not negating the 25, $250,000 that was put into it. I have two concerns, primary concerns. One, if we accept this building, there are at least three I can think of off the top of my head right now, people will be here in our next meeting saying, hey, we have a building. The church I currently attend just put $70,000 into a accessible lift and has a $42,000 pot of money sitting there for upkeep. I'm guessing that sometime in the near future, one of our city landmarks on Second Avenue, where Second Avenue turns into Ninth Street, they are going to need some assistance in keeping Culver Hall operating. At the meeting of, Committee of the Whole Meeting, Mr. Hardika came up and said, I didn't realize that giving my church old Mako Theater to the city was an option. So that's a very big concern to me. We still do not have a building, a building donation policy for the city, and I think before we do anything ever when it comes to buildings, we need to have a policy that gives us and future councils guidance as to when and we can accept large donations of property, whether it be land or buildings. And the second part is that I just, we, we just don't need another building. There are, one of the things that I was very clear about when I was asking the folks who came to us was who else have they contacted? And they have not contacted, contacted anybody else as of the time we had our meeting. They have not contacted the county or the county historical society. They had not counted the state or the state historical society. They had not contacted even our local historical society. They came to the city and expected us to take it. I asked them, what were your plans while you were putting in $250,000? And I had to ask the question three times before one of the gentlemen said, we didn't think that far ahead. We did not have plans once it was restored. So based on that and based on, on, on the feedback, and I live down the street from it, it's a beautiful building. I would love to have it, but the city just is not the proper steward of the future of that building. Part of the discussion on Tuesday, as I understood it, was, well, let's just take it for now and then whoever gets it will, will take it from us. Like, once we find the part right partner, they'll take it from us. We've been giving services for free when it comes to our ambulances and mutual aid and all that kind of stuff for years and years and years and years. And now that we're trying to build a public safety center, none of those folks are, can or willing to pitch in. And I have, I have a strong suspicion that if someone can have a building for free and we do all the maintenance and all the upkeep, they have no reason to take it from us. So I think that we have done as much as we possibly can for this group of individuals. I think we're dangerously close to setting a precedent that anytime a nonprofit wants help, they're going to come to us and ask us to help with the RFP process. They're going to come to us and ask us for our city staff for free, which is what consultants do, to figure out the best way to ask for help. And we just do not have the staff or the time to do that. We have numerous historical buildings in this city and a lot of passionate people, and I think we have done more than our fair share as a city, using taxpayer dollars to help a nonprofit entity. So at this point, I will not be supporting any more help to the organization. If they had $250,000 to put into the building, they should be able to come up with an extra five to hire a consultant to find somebody to do what they want done with it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Councillor Freely?
That was very well spoken, Steve. I appreciate your input. And I come from a different perspective to some degree. And I've been trying to weigh this in my head, but my understanding right now is what we're looking at is just the continuation of facilitation of the RFP process. Is that correct? It's not in any way, any acquisition by the city of the building itself?
That's the question, that the draft that's in the packet is...
And I guess I would ask you directly, is that a burdensome thing for the city to be doing at this point in time?
Not at this point. We've got most of the work done now. So the next step would be, we would just advertise, which would be a simple email, and then Pam would have to open the RFPs and the data that's, they come in.
I guess, you know, I look at like, you know, the most recent significant project that I guess would be comparable or comparable would be the Fountain Project, where a grassroots effort was put together to raise a half a million dollars to restore and renovate a beautiful facility in the park. And the same thing has happened now with a historical building in the city, where they put in a grassroots effort, effort to put together a half a million dollars to restore a beautiful building, to create a museum and cultural center for the benefit of the city of Virginia. A museum is an educational center, and so I think that that would be, what would be valuable to the city, to have that available to us in the city as citizens to enjoy. And so I guess I'm looking at it from the perspective that I'm kind of the least that the city could do on behalf of the Friends of Benai Abraham is to continue the process that they put in play. They actually have done what we are seeking to have done throughout this city, to have buildings restored and renovated and rehabilitated to a level that they brought this one to. And now they're providing that gift to us with an additional $50,000 plus in operating expended expenses or revenue. And I, I'm, I'm of the mind that I believe the city put at least $50,000 or more into the project up at the park as well. So I mean, we, we were very enthusiastic about restoration of a beautiful facility in the park that would benefit and be advantageous to the entire community. I believe this building has similar characteristics to what advantages it offers to the citizens of the Virginia, Minnesota city. So I'm just at the point where I guess I'm of the mind, I don't know enough with regard to our financial standing, whether or not it's something we could afford and run ourselves, but we're beyond that point now where we've decided, I guess, there's a consensus of sorts that we, as a city, wouldn't want to own that building and have people and personnel hired to be maintaining that building, mowing the lawn, overseeing it, doing custodial duties and so on, paying utilities and such. But we're at that point where now we would like to continue to partner with the Friends of Benai Abraham to at least continue to facilitate that possibility for them to find somebody, hopefully a local person or persons or entity that will continue in the same mode that they have of providing entertainment venue there, potentially classes that could be held there. And if you haven't been there, you need to go there. You need to see the displays that are on, display there, the placards that they put, the history of the Jewish community that was once a very vibrant community that helped establish and build the entire Chestnut Street, Main Street. It's a beautifully done museum that's being offered to the city of Virginia, and I would like to see us as a council move forward with at least providing the opportunity to continue the facilitation of the RFP process, to assist the Friends who are 80-plus years old and live in the city's area and are not really networked up here anymore in the capacity that we are as a council or as citizens within the city currently, to be able to pull that kind of thing together. And if it isn't burdensome to the administration of the city, I would like to see us move forward with at least letting the Friends of Benai Abraham know that we very much appreciate what they've done for that building, to that building, and for the city of Virginia to provide us an educational facility such as that museum and move forward with assisting them in finding somebody to, to oversee that building and hopefully keep it moving forward in, in the capacity that it's been used. So that's where I stand. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Freely. Councillor Birbu?
Thank you, Mayor and fellow councillors. I'm of the exact opposite thought process on this building. Number one, it's no longer designated as a church. It's an individual, I believe, 501(c)(3) building right now, so it's not going to be used as a church, but they've given up the church designation. This building is completely renovated up to all the new modern building codes. It has handicap accessibility, has wonderful acoustics in that building. This building could be used for all kinds of activities with our park and rec department. I don't care what anybody tells you about the costs on it, that's not an issue. We have these things in Alcott Park, but they're not enclosed. For heat and warmth, we can rent out that particular building a lot longer in the season with heat and everything else in it. We just spent over $100,000 on 218 Chestnut Street, just in renovations that aren't done. There's another $30,000 needs to go in that. We're never going to sell that for what we've got in that. And we're looking at these huge programs that we've put together with grants and other things for downtown Virginia. There, there, I believe, 17 or plus applications, and we have ability to do about six in the next year. There's $50,000 of the grants, plus in-kind money from the individuals, plus there'll be city needs on some of these buildings. So what, why not take a building that's already 100% complete with already a amount of money that'll carry it for at least five years and take a look at it? I don't believe we need to hire extra staff to take care of that building. We just rotate our schedules right with our individuals, our people that are in our unions. All I want to see is pick up this building that's being given to us. We have the right as a city council to refuse any building in this community. I don't care if it's not up to where we want it to take it, you refuse it. We are under no obligation to, to take these buildings if somebody comes and offers them to them, if they're in huge disrepair. That small building on 218, I never dreamed of the cost of money that there was in, that was put in there. We had an original estimate of about $48,000. Now it's way over $100,000. We're not going to get even close to that when we go to sell that building. I think we have a pending, maybe pending offer, and I'm not sure, but there may be a pending offer. It's not going to come close to what's been put into that building. That's not the idea of renovations. Renovations to help business. This is a freestanding building that we as a city can rent out, and we can have other entities. The school's going to be building a new school. Take classrooms over there, do things for music, other things, because it's got beautiful acoustics. So I'm dead set against going out for an RFP unless to get another owner at this point in time when we have the chance to take this building. We can always do something with it later. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Birbu. Is there anybody else on the council that'd like to make a comment or a question or concern with respect to this? Councillor Johnson?
Do have a question. Have the Friends agreed to the updated RFP?
I have not sent it to them. I came, I came to the Committee of the Whole with clarification question because we had a difference of opinion on what the intent of the council was from the last meeting.
So we don't even know if they're going to accept this RFP?
We choose to use this RFP, this is the RFP they get, and this is what we will submit, and that is, that is it.
I also have a concern. Find it on here. The, we changed a couple of those, those phrases, but it's still, the Friends, and I can't find the exact, but basically it says, and the Friends can reserve the right to not accept any other proposals. And that concerns me also, that if they got a proposal, they could say no, and then what's the next step? And I guess that's why I'm at the point where we've done as much. I say we give them this, and we change the who they need to contact about it, and they deal with it with themselves future, because I'm just concerned, what happens when there are no RFPs, when nobody replies? What happens if they get some replies and they don't accept it? How long do we continue to support this? I think we have done, I'll say it again, we've done more than, than our fair share to help them. I think we give them this RFP, and they can change it, and they put, put their contact information in it, and they figure, they finish it out, figure it out on their own moving forward.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Anyone else? Yes, councillor Freely?
In all due respect, Steve, I think we've done little to nothing to help them, to be honest, at this point. I mean, they created a beautiful museum for the city of Virginia. They offered it as a gift to the city of Virginia with money to run it as well. And again, to make that comparison, running the fountain isn't free either. We have people that need to do maintenance at there. We have to do utilities for lights and electricity and so on and so forth. I mean, that didn't come free to the city either. And so I, I'm just looking at that regard, like, there was such great enthusiasm to restore and renovate the beautiful facility in the park, which is great for this community. And I just don't think people are seeing how great this museum can be for this community. And especially as an educational facility for people to become informed of the impact and significance of that community that was once so involved and instrumental in the development of this entire community. So I would like to see us, like I said, the very least I think we can do is continue to facilitate that group in at least finding somebody, hopefully locally, to move forward with utilizing that facility in the same capacity that it's been utilized by having singers come in, concerts being provided, classes being provided. Like Charlie said, there's a lot of things that the building can be utilized for. And I'm assuming, and I'm just hoping and praying that there's going to be someone in this community that will rise forth to do that on behalf of all of us. We would have no ownership in, in this, given the current RFP presentation that we're going to be providing. And like I say, these are people in their 80s who are no longer living in this area, need people like us to assist them in finding somebody to take this gift and to do something with it, not unlike what they've been doing with it for the past several years, which has been very advantageous and beneficial to many people in the community who have gone to those events that have been held there, including myself and my wife. And I hope other people have as well. So any of that, I'm at that point where I, I would make a motion that we move forward with the RFP process, to facilitate the RFP process on this, on behalf of the city of Virginia, for the Friends of Benai Abraham to seek acquisition of that building to be utilized in the manner and capacity... I think we give them this RFP, and they can change it, and they put their contact information in it, and they figure it out on their own moving forward.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Anyone else? Yes, Councilor Friedle?
In all due respect, Steve, I think we've done little to nothing to help them, to be honest, at this point. I mean, they created a beautiful museum for the city of Virginia. They offered it as a gift to the city of Virginia, with money to run it as well. And again, to make that comparison, running the fountain isn't free either. We have people that need to do maintenance at there. We have to do utilities for lights and electricity and so on and so forth. I mean, that didn't come free to the city either. And so, I'm just looking at that regard, like, there was such great enthusiasm to restore and renovate the beautiful facility in the park, which is great for this community. And I just don't think people are seeing how great this museum can be for this community, and especially as an educational facility for people to become informed of the impact and significance of that community that was once so involved and instrumental in the development of this entire community. So, I would like to see us, like I said, the very least I think we can do is continue to facilitate that group in at least finding somebody, hopefully locally, to move forward with utilizing that facility in the same capacity that it's been utilized by having singers come in, concerts being provided, classes being provided. Like Charlie said, there's a lot of things that the building can be utilized for. And I'm assuming, and I'm just hoping and praying, that there's going to be someone in this community that will rise forth to do that on behalf of all of us. We would have no ownership in this, given the current RFP presentation that we're going to be providing. And like I say, these are people in their 80s who are no longer living in this area, need people like us to assist them in finding somebody to take this gift and to do something with it, not unlike what they've been doing with it for the past several years, which has been very advantageous and beneficial to many people in the community who have gone to those events that have been held there, including myself and my wife. And I hope other people have as well. So, in any event, I'm at that point where I would make a motion that we move forward with the RFP process, to facilitate the RFP process on behalf of the city of Virginia, for the Friends of Benet Abraham to seek acquisition of that building to be utilized in the manner and capacity that they hope it will continue to be used as it has been up to this point since they restored it.
And that is your motion? Or you want to wait for further discussion?
I would wait for further discussion, but I would move forward in that. That's what I'm hoping we will move forward for. Like I said, we are hoping these kinds of projects would be taking place all over this community. We've even enacted ordinances expecting people to renovate and restore and rehabilitate their properties throughout the city, legally expecting them to, potentially citing them for not doing so. And here we have a group that's invested a half a million dollars into a building, restored it to current level of ADA accessibility, and they're offering it as a gift to the city. And like Charlie said, we've put money into other buildings down on Chestnut Street. We've put money into abandoned hotels up in Midway. We've put money into abandoned properties up in Midway on the rocky top of the hill. I mean, I'm just confused as to what we're trying to accomplish in this city when somebody has given us a product that we're trying to produce, and we don't want anything to do with it. I just don't understand that. That's frustrating to me. If we really want this to happen in this city, when it is happened, we don't want anything to do with it? I'm confused about that. So, in any event, I would like to see us move forward with at least providing the assistance to these 80-year-old-plus people that no longer live in this city, but have heartfelt connections to it enough so that they invested into this building to offer it as a gift to this city. And I think it would be a wonderful educational facility for all of the kids in our school system here in Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Friedle. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, again, we've had a lot of discussion on this, and I do agree with Councilor Friedle with, and also with Councilor Bearbow, the acoustics are amazing in there. It's a beautiful historic building. I guess after, and I didn't attend the last meeting, which, you know, I kind of wished that I would have been able to be there, but I couldn't. But I think we're, I feel that they are a, they're in fact, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. They can enter into their own RFP process. And I think we've established that they have that ability just as much as a city has the ability to do that. I would feel much more comfortable writing a letter of support for their RFP process and having them do that on their own. I would also think that being, if the majority of the members are in Minneapolis or in the Twin Cities area, they would have more of a response, potential response. And I guess I'd like to ask you about the RFP process itself, Britt, if I could. When you send out, when you say Pam or whoever's going to send out an email, where does that go? Was it like an email blast, or do you have a target audience?
We have an email blast that we send out to the distribution list for the council agendas, and then usually in the newspaper. So it would be a cost to at least run it in the paper. We usually run it at least once, if not twice. So there would be some of it a cost.
But it's just run in our local paper?
Normally, yes. Our legal paper.
I guess, I mean, I feel like this has a much broader capacity of an audience to potentially participate. I'm also not 100%, comfortable with the language. It does say the city of Virginia hereafter referred to as a city is partnering. So the word partnering is used in there, again, it's used at the bottom. I guess I'm of the opinion, and I look at this, it's, again, it's going to take programming. You're going to have to have, you know, someone with programming skills, whether that comes out of Park and Rec. And, you know, it sounded like the recommendation from the Park and Rec Department was that this might be too much for them to bite off, especially with the new miners coming forward and a potential budget issue with, yes, there is a $50,000 endowment that would be included. But, you know, I think looking down the road with some of the spreadsheet expenses that our Park and Rec Director shared with this council, I just, I feel like if they have the ability to go forward, and the Friends of Benet have that ability, I would be much more comfortable writing a letter in support. We want to support the building, the historicalness, the potential programming, the amazing acoustics that are in that building. But I also look at it as a, it's a private nonprofit entity, not dissimilar to the Judy Garland Museum in Grand Rapids that has its own board, secretary, treasurer, and it's run by a membership, where the city isn't bringing in programming or anything like that, or responsible for maintenance or upkeep. So, at this point, I'm not comfortable moving forward. I don't want to see anything, I want to see someone take over the building that's going to care about the building and care about the wonderful historical preservation. Also of the Jewish community that was so integral to everything about our area in the Iron Range. So, I mean, my heart is definitely that I would like to see them find a good partner. I just, the language that's in here, I'm not necessarily comfortable with. And I also feel that if they have their own capacity to do this, I think that they should be given that opportunity first. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that have a question or a comment with respect to this issue? A couple of brief comments from the mayor. Under item seven points is review of the request for proposal, and that's what we're doing. That's the goal and objective here, is to review the request for proposal. Now, for me, it's about historical significance and historical value. We went through this with the North End Building, where there was a lot of opposition and a lot of concern and support for the North End Building, which is a historical building, which needed significant renovation. Cost was $278,000 for utilities alone in order to operate that facility, yet people from the community who were concerned about historical preservation of buildings in this community banded together and came to the council and said, "Look, you have to do something about this. We can't tear this building down. You can't allow this building to be torn down. We didn't own the building. The county did. We had an opportunity to buy it back, and we didn't. The county threw some economic development, now it's been demolished." And there are still people, I hear quite a lot, I'm sure you all do too, about, that sure is a shame that we tore down that historic building. So, when I look at this, I don't look at every building in town. I don't look at whether or not, you know, we buy a building here or do a building there. In this particular case, it's a request for proposal from the Benet Abraham to help them with, to preserve the historic part of this. Now, there may be some language issues that can be changed, but for me, the crux of this new RFP was that the city wouldn't own it. The city is not going to be part of this. They're not going to put any, they're not going to own it, they're not going to operate it, they're not going to facilitate it, they're not going to use, we're not going to use personnel on which to operate the facility based upon what the RFP says. We're simply helping them try to find a partner to facilitate this, because it is this historic building. And as Councilor Beyondich had indicated, and rightfully so, that, you know, there's, she's a part of, and many are, down on, in the Fintown area, you have the Kevila Hall. That's a very historic building as well. And we hope that that stays operating for decades to come. But the example was that if they were to come to us, would we do that? Would we do the same thing that Benet is asking us to do? Would we want to take over that building? No. But we would want to try to help preserve the history of it, and the historic significance of it, because that's part of our, that's part of our history. You know, do we want to erase the history of our community? We don't. So we want to help to preserve it. And this RFP is a small investment in the city to help them move forward. Do I think the city should own it? I wanted to at first, but the consensus is that we don't. Our staff doesn't want to own it, our Park and Rec Department doesn't want to own it, our, the Park and Rec Commission indicated that they're not supportive of it. We have the majority of the city council, it indicated in previous discussions, that they're not in favor of the city operating it, and I respect that. I don't have a problem not being part of ownership of that property, or not being part of putting any funding into that property. But it's a gem for somebody to take it over, for the historical significance with respect to the history of it, the museum quality of it. And here is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for some entity, not the city of Virginia, but some entity, to take over that building and operate it as a historic museum, as a community center, whether it's a 501(c)(3) or whatever the case be. Yes, Councilor Paulson, I agree that they could do this on their own. No questions about that. But, so, the question for us today is reviewing the request for proposal. Do we support that request for proposal and ask to be sent out, or we don't? At the last committee meeting, there was a motion not to, and that didn't pass. And I think this is such an important issue that all the councilors, you know, we should be present when we make a vote for this, and that's why it's before us today, because there is a council that couldn't make it because of other obligations. So, now we're all here today to talk about this. So the RFP was discussed at Tuesday's meeting. Our city administrator made a change about the city not owning the property, but still moving forward with the RFP to help the Benet find a partner. So the question is, we're reviewing the RFP, so we would, I would like to see someone make a motion to either move forward with the RFP with the changes that the city not be part, be ownership in this, in any way, just be a partner helping to find somebody, or we don't send out the RFP and just send them a letter saying, you know, "We're no longer going to participate, and you may, we can go ahead and move forward, and we, you know, we wish you all the best of luck." So that's basically where we're at, right? So, Tom, do you have any comments or anything you'd like to say? Any issue at all, or not? No? Okay. Councilor Bearbow? I mean, Councilor Barnzelli?
If anybody from that church would come up to me, I would be willing to help, willing to help them find somebody. But how are, how will the city, how will us mayor and councilors help them to build that building? What can we do except, we know we can show them what's going on there, it's all the money that they've got spent in there. But I don't want to have my name on there, like Councilor Bearbow said. 118, we started off, it's just, we're going to put a new floor in her. You know, it's still $48,000, and we have Revive, a committee that we've had here. We're working on the one on the 300 block now. It seems like we are going to get involved in, $54,000 won't last very long. Maintenance, I mean, the utilities, as everyone here knows, in the city of Virginia is high. I would be willing to help them if, when they, how are we going to do that, Mayor? How would we, how are we going to?
Well, the purpose, Councilor Barnzelli, is a request for proposal is, what's on the agenda today is to assist the Benet Abraham by sending out these proposals, if anybody's interested, on their behalf, to acquire the property, to take it over, to work with the Benet Abraham, to move forward with that. So, we are assisting them in that process. We are sending out applications and e-blasts and those kind of things, and advertising that this building is available, and Benet is willing to find a way in which to partner with somebody, and that, and those RFPs, hopefully somebody would respond and say, you know, "I'm interested." Maybe there won't be anybody who responds to that. So, the question here is, you know, I mean, I've received a lot of calls at the coffee shops, and on the telephone, and the mayor's office all over, and I'm sure all the other councilors as well. And, you know, the majority of the people honestly have said that, you know, "Don't buy the building, don't be, don't take over the building, don't be any part of that building." You know, "This city doesn't need another building." We've heard that loud and clear from a variety of sources, plus the council. The question is, do we help them without buying the property, without being involved in it, without having any ownership, without having any expenditure other than, you know, the stipend of putting it in the newspaper and assisting them from a historical perspective moving forward? So that's the question today. Do we, when reviewing the request for proposal, I'm hoping that there'll be a motion either to move forward with that, with the changes, or not move forward. So I think that's, we have to put it to bed tonight, I think. Right? I think it has to be done tonight. So, anything else, Councilor Barnzelli? Did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor.
Add any further comments? Okay. Anyone else on, Councilor Johnson, Councilor Beyondich, Councilor Paulson, Councilor Friedle?
The sticking point in the past, in discussions amongst the council, was whether or not the city should acquire it and own that building. That has been removed from this process. So all I'm asking the council to do is to move forward with facilitating the RFP process to assist the Friends in finding somebody, hopefully locally, that will take over that building and run it in a way that the museum would be availed to the citizens of Virginia for its historical significance and its cultural and hopefully entertaining capacity. So I would make a motion that we move forward with the RFP process on behalf of the Friends of Benet Abraham, to assist them in the, or to facilitate them in the acquiring somebody interested in the building to run it in the capacity in which it's been used recently.
And that's the RFP as proposed here? Thank you. Is there support? Is there support? Is there support? Motion fails for lack of support? Councilor Bearbow?
I was not going to make a motion, but I've made my position clear in the past that I think the city should obtain a 100% viable, handicapped, all renovated building. It has natural gas to it already, so it's not steam. It is not the huge cost that I saw projected, because I don't think that has the cost that it's been projected. Not, and I'm against you, Brian, but I've seen, been here a lot longer, and you've seen costs of buildings. But it can be used for all kinds of purposes within this community, especially in the off-summer months, when all we have is Alcott Park for events like that, you know, where people need some protection from weather, et cetera. So that's my standpoint. So I don't care how you, but a motion, I'm going to vote against any one of those RFP motions.
Well, we already had one motion that didn't receive a second, and so we don't have any other motions on the floor? Are there any other motions on the floor? Councilor Johnson?
My concern, I don't know, so this again, is that if we, are we opening up an RFP I think that we have to go back to that point, that who will be next to come before this council and ask for help to write an RFP for whatever they need? We don't have any policies, we don't have any guidelines, we don't have any past practice, as I'm aware of, about writing RFPs for nonprofits. And so, I think, I said this, the first time this came up, and I was sitting in this chair, I said, "I think we need to have a policy on accepting donated buildings." And I will make that motion, that the city staff come up with a policy on accepting donations of real property, and we can, then I would be comfortable revisiting this in the future, RFP or not. My motion is to direct city staff to come up with a firm policy on accepting donations of real property.
Okay. That's the motion by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? Is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you. I think in order for us to be looking forward and avoid this in the future, we've just spent, you know, a half hour, which is fine, because I wasn't at the hour and a half last Tuesday. We need to be looking forward and solve the problem before it happens again. And I think having the city staff create a policy that we can all agree on and move forward with will alleviate this moving forward and save us time and money.
Thank you. Okay. Councilor Friedle?
And in no disrespect to where we're at in this process, it comes down in my mind and in my heart what we value in this city. It seems that we value putting laws in place that force the hand of people to renovate, restore, and rehabilitate their properties in town, or be cited for that, to be fined for that. But when people come together in a grassroots effort to provide a gift to the city with a significant investment on behalf of the a significant investment on behalf of the city, we want nothing to do with that. That, that's confounding to me. But I don't disagree with the fact that we do need some process in place should this come up again. My fear is, it may never come up again, because when the word gets out that this is what the city values, we'd rather cite people for not doing what we'd like to have done in this town? We have a product that's been produced, which we are hoping to have done throughout the city, and we want nothing to do with it, because it might cost us some money, which it may in fact, it wouldn't have, given what we just proposed. We were not seeking acquisition of it. We were seeking to assist the Friends of Benet Abraham with getting somebody to do it on behalf of the city. So I'm just, I'm frustrated with what we're trying to accomplish in this city. I really am. Because now we've got a vacant building ordinance, and now we've got a business certification occupancy ordinance, and we've got a Blighton Building Maintenance and Preservation Ordinance, and we've gotten all of these ordinances in place to force the hand of people, most of which find that these kinds of projects cost prohibitive to them, otherwise they'd be doing them, but we're willing to cite them and fine them for that. But when people are willing to invest a half a million dollars into this community, we don't want anything to do with it, despite its value to the community historically. So I'm frustrated with that, but that's just life as it is. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor, and the second, further discussion, counsel? Okay, I do. Do I think we need a policy? Not necessarily. But if we want to have a policy about other things in the city, accepting donated buildings, fine, let's develop a policy and spend time discussing that and refining it and making sure that, you know, it's flexible enough so that it's workable. But we have accepted buildings in the past. We just accepted a building from a bank, where we demoed the building, it cost us, I don't know how many thousands of dollars, for blight remediation. So we, and we've accepted other buildings in the past. This isn't, this isn't, this isn't something new. So anyway, it's been moved and supported at this level, too. Establish a donation policy. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. When we talk about putting ordinance in place for other businesses, I, as having had a business, I understand why those are in place. It is not to punish the building owner, it is not to punish the business, it is merely trying to make everybody in that building safe. So leaving things that are unsafe is not right either. I invited our fire marshal into the building, and I had him go through the entire building and tell me, what do I need to do? The things he pointed out did not cost me an arm and a leg, I did not have to put in a sprinkler system. It was merely the education to keep the occupants of that building safe. It was making sure I had fire extinguishers that were labeled, to have a smoke detector by the doors with a light, so if somebody was in there when a fire broke out, they could get out safely. It wasn't to punish the building owners, and I don't want people to get that idea that this is a punishment, this is a safety issue. We have old buildings downtown, and they need to be up to code. We have a code, let's follow it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Counselor Biondich. So this is, this motion is to, for the city to establish a donated building policy. Is there any further discussion on that? Counselor Barabu?
You know, well, it sort of has to do with that. Now, we've just established a empty building registration ordinance, correct? Where we have fees that are attached, $100 the first year, $200 a second. What happens if this building stays empty? We're going to have to start charging a nonprofit money, because nobody's in there. An empty building. That's what we've just passed here, last council meeting. So is that fair? I don't like, I still want the city to accept this building. So as you go down the road, if it's left empty for a year, and all of a sudden ordinance has changed, or not ordinance, but building goes, and the state changed, whoever takes that building is going to have to come up with those new changes that the state does, and they're making changes every year. Where are we getting ahead in this community? We need to look at the future of this community, where we want to. We're landlocked. Let's take these things that we can make profitable in the future. Enough said. I don't know which way to vote on this, this motion. It's crazy, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, you'll have to make the decision within the next 30 seconds. Okay, it's been moved and supported to move forward with directing staff to draft a building donation policy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, let's go back to this Benet Abraham Museum thing, we have to resolve it. So Counselor Freely made a motion that was not seconded. We're still looking at this policy. We still, are we going to continue to move forward with this, or are we not going to move forward with this? Or what is the council, what is, what is the elected body going to do? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I'm passionate about historical buildings as well, and it was sad to see the Northland Building get knocked down. I do agree with that 100%. I don't feel that that's the case we're going to be looking at going forward with the Benet Abraham Museum synagogue. I feel that it is viable, and since they are a nonprofit, and is Mr. Milovitz the attorney? And I feel very comfortable that he is extremely capable, if they want to use the language that we have partially drafted here, I think that that would be helpful to them. But I think Mr. Milovitz is very capable of putting on an RFP, and I guess at this point, I would, I'm going to make a motion that we sever ties with the RFP process with the Friends of Benet Abraham request for going out for RFPs. And I think in the future, we should again establish what, you know, we should establish something with, you know, what our criteria are for an RFP process. So with that, I'll make a motion to sever the tie going forward with the RFP for the Benet Abraham.
And part of that motion is to send them a letter of support as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. Motion by Counselor Paulson, is there support for that?
For discussion?
Support by Counselor Johnson for discussion, further discussion, Counselor Johnson.
And we give them what we have and tell them just to use it as they want, just remove everything that says return to the City of Virginia? I am very comfortable with that.
Okay, so, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Counselor Freely? Oh, okay, so, thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Coffee?
No.
Barabu?
No.
Freely? Paulson?
Yes.
Biondich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Barzelli?
Yes.
Motion passes. Order three. Thank you. Moved on to item eight, discussion items. Item eight, point one, is appoint Matthew Sipola to the Everett, Virginia Airport Authority for a three-year term ending December 31, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by Counselor Barabu, supported by Counselor Barzelli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, point two, appoint Matthew Dinkle to the Everett, Virginia Airport Authority for the remainder of the term ending December 31, 2021.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Barzelli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Eight point three, adopt the resolution authorizing the City of Virginia Economic Development Authority, also known as VIDA, to make application to and accept funds from the Department of Iron Range Resources Rehabilitation Community Infrastructure Grant.
Also move.
Moved by Counselor Barabu, is there support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, point four, a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve an easement request from the Natural Harvest Food Co-op located at 732 Fourth Street North in Virginia in order to construct solar panels five feet, 10 inches onto city-owned property. Recommendation was heard and approved by Planning and Zoning.
I'll move the recommendation from Planning and Zoning.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve of the request for planning from Natural Harvest Foods and the recommendation from Planning and Zoning to allow Natural Harvest Foods to construct the solar panels of five feet, 10 inches from the, on city property. Is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Barabu?
Which direction is that it doesn't say? Is that south? I was assumed toward the bike and the walking trail, it's already there?
Yes.
What happens if there's an accident there and you run into those solar panels?
They're liable. As part of the easement agreement, they have to have liability insurance on that.
So is it going to be protected with a fence or something? It doesn't really say on this.
The Planning and Zoning Commission vetted that out very, very deeply.
Okay. I wasn't at that, so.
Yeah, so, thank you, Counselor Barabu. Any further comments? Okay, moved and supported to accept the recommendation by Planning and Zoning, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item nine, item nine is the community report, so I think what we'd like to do right now is suspend the remaining portion of the council meeting and hold in abeyance our committee reports and other items of concern in order to conduct the Truth and Taxation Meeting, which is scheduled by law for 6:31 p.m. today. So motion to suspend.
I will move to suspend in order to hold the Truth and Taxation Meeting.
Motion by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Barabu, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. By law, every December, we, as the City of Virginia and any of the other city and county throughout the state of Minnesota, are required to hold the Truth and Taxation Meeting. We did schedule our Truth and Taxation Meeting for today, 6:31 p.m. So I'll call that taxation meeting to order at 6:31 p.m. Today's date is December 10th, Tuesday, 2019. And so the purpose of Truth and Taxation is to go over the city's budget, to look at the levy that's been proposed, and look at, and hear from the general public regarding the proposed budget and the levy. So what we'd like to do, and I see a lot of people in attendance, and it's unfortunate that you have to come to a council meeting in order to address this particular issue, but welcome, and we hope we can address and answer all the questions that you have. In addition, we do have some county staff outside that can talk to you about the valuations and some of the processes that we don't discuss at the Truth and Taxation Meeting, or we can't give you an answer to. We will try to answer all your questions, give you as much time as you need to explain what's going on. But we have prepared for you a PowerPoint presentation about the city budget and about the, what our levy increase is. I think we're asking for a 6% levy, and that 6% levy is going to, going to create based on your current property taxes, current property taxes. And the market value of the City of Virginia's current property, not the ones that are proposed, not the ones that you're here for tonight, but your 2019 property taxes. The total market value in the City of Virginia is 363,000, 914,412 dollars. We're asking, based on the discussions at staff level and through the elected body here, that we're looking at a 6% increase in the budget. That 6% increase equates to 295,148 dollars. And so we're looking to create some additional funding based upon your 2019 to 2000 taxes. So this is what we're going to do. We're going to go through this presentation, explain the budget, how it moves forward, and why we're asking for the 295,148 dollars. Now, this is a 6% levy increase. If we were not to levy, if we were to decide tonight to go to a zero levy, the city staff, and I think I want to give credit to our city administrator and our city finance director and all the city councilor, try to work to find an economic and a reasonable budget moving forward. So at the end of the budget, when we get done, look, explaining it, the end of the budget will have about 600 and some thousand dollars in reserves. So we have to have a balanced budget, 680,000 dollars in reserves. And in order to do that, in case something comes up, piece of equipment breaks down, we need to purchase something, or something is, or there's a cost overrun on an unidentified or issue that we're not aware of, we can use that contingency fund. So by going to a zero tax levy, we're taking half of that away. So in the event something happens, you know, services suffer and other things move along. And so we'll try to hopefully go through that, answer your questions for you. So that being said, I'm going to turn this over to our city finance director, Sherri Erickson. And Sherri, if you could go through the pie chart that's currently on the screen and explain to those here in attendance and listening at home how our budget process works, why you're asking for this increase, and then we'll hear from some questions from the audience at any time. So thank you for your patience and hope we can answer your questions. Sherri?
Thank you, Mayor, council, and citizens. There at the table by the door is this handout that shows revenues and expenditures on the second page, and as well as our enterprise system here. So I'll be going through this page. As the mayor said, the general fund levy is 295,148 dollars increase. Our overall budget, operating budget for 2020 is 26,413,413,270, 76. Out of that 26 million in expenses, there's a special levy of 65,978 dollars, which would be for the VIDA Downtown Business Development and Brit, if you want to. Okay, so that's what I believe Counselor Barabu was mentioning earlier about the loan program for downtown. It's going to come out of that 65,000 in addition to 300,000 dollar bond that we will be using as revolving loan. The special levy, P&amp;H tax abatement, that's, P&amp;H pays their taxes, their property taxes like everybody else, but out of that is 181,000 dollars that has to go to pay their bond payment, and then they get any excess back to them for economic development. That's what the 100% tax abatement in a nutshell is. The debt service, as you can see, is a little over a million. On this front page, you're going to go down to sales tax revenue. We're projecting 1.5 million in sales tax revenue, but we're going to have a 20 million dollar bond for the miners project. That sales tax revenue is going to go to pay for the bond, but it does not come out of the general fund.
If you would please add to that, if I may, Sherri, that this bond that's in the budget, there's revenue streams and there are expenditures, and the revenue and expenditures are all together in this budget. So when it comes down to the end, the budget has 681,032 dollars in reserve, in case of an emergency for whatever it is. But just remember that the money that's being gleaned from the sales tax is to pay the bonds that are issued for the miners, and has no effect- effect on your property taxes, has no effect on your property taxes, please continue, Sherri.
That's, that's correct, Mayor, once again, we're asking for $295,000 to help with the general fund budget, that is the levy. Out of this 26 million dollar operating budget, we have very little or no capital. The operating budget actually is a little over 9 million, the miners' construction, that's the bond payment, labor and benefits to operate the city is not quite 13 million, it's 12.9, and it equates to about 49% of the overall budget. Retiree insurance is another 5%, that's our OPEB obligation, our insurance liability to the retirees. We are doing a pay-as-you-go, and we also do have an investment, so, I mean, last resort, we could tap that investment for the OPEB, but it's got a pretty good interest rate right now, and I'd like to keep it there.
Okay, just to explain to the audience what OPEB is, it's other post-retirement healthcare benefits, and there was a time where city employees had healthcare benefits upon retirement, in other words, the city had a retirement program where the city employees received their pension, in addition to that, they received medical benefits upon retirement. Now that has sunsetted, the last one was in 2006, is that correct? That's no longer the case, but we have legacy costs associated with that, and that's what OPEB is. Thank you, Sherri.
That is correct. On the second page is the expenses, and it's a little more detailed, it'll show you each department and the total costs, insurance, any capital, and the total over here on the left-hand column, I also have, and I welcome anybody, my office door is open, to come in, and I will go through this budget book with you. You can go through each department, see each personnel, see how much it costs, and benefits, taxes, payroll taxes, and total package, so, feel free, any questions?
Okay, so, the general budget, again, is 26,413,276, that's both revenue and expenditures, and when you take the revenue and the expenditures based on the pie chart of what we have for expenditures, it comes down to where we have a requ- a profit or a.
Surplus.
A surplus, thank you, of 681,132. That's a, that's a pretty lean budget, and that's with no capital purchases really, other than $50,000 that we put in the budget to help maintain the streetlight system here, it has to come in there, so that's in part of the capital equipment, but that's about it, no loaders, no ambulances, no squad cars, no, nothing, because we try to lean it out as much as we can, based on the projections for profit, for revenues against expenditures, so, you know, we are kicking the candle a little bit for those kind of things, but so, say, the budget, the, excuse me, the requested for the 600 and, 295,000 for the increase, right, and that's for, we're asking for the levy, and with 681,132, that's a surplus for 2020. If we were to change the 6% to zero levy, that would leave us with about 380,000 in reserves or a surplus to help in case of emergencies. So, when we look at the budget, that's where we're at. We have other negotiations with respect to some of the properties that we own, for example, the hospital and those kind of things, but all that has always been part of the budget, that may change in the budget next year, but this is where we're at today. So if you're looking at the costs associated with your taxes, and how your taxes are being affected in 2020, we're not going to realize any increases to the city until next, the following year, we're basing it on what we have right now. So, I don't know if you have this comparison sheet here, Sherri, did you leave this?
Yes, I did, sir.
Okay, so, thank you, so, let's, let's stop right here, and does have, anybody have any, before we go to the property taxing, does anybody have any questions about the budget itself? Yeah, before, before we talk about the private tax, before we talk about the private tax visitor, which we'll get to momentarily, thank you, does anybody have any question about the budget and how it works, sir? Okay, okay, let's, let's go with the budget first, because I know there's going to be a lot of questions about the proposed, so, as far as the current budget for 2020 is concerned, we're asking for the levy, which is 6%, 295,000, so you see some communities have 5%, some have 10%, some have 0%, that's where we're at today, yes, would you please come forward, sir? Would you please come forward and, and just push.
Maybe that.
Mr. Thomas?
Robert Thomas.
Yes, thank you.
And my question is that, I just for clarity, the proposed budget of 295,000 is for the purpose of what? Just to build the reserve fund? And what is the, what is the 295,000 actually going to be spent on?
Well, the gentleman, Sherri, why don't you give him a list of, I could, but she can.
I can actually give you this, sir. The 295,000 is part of the general fund levy, which all of these departments sit, and that's what goes to pay for your streets, your fire, your ambulance, your police, the general administration miscellaneous there, such as your parks and rec, cultural library, you'll see all of those departments add up way more than 295,000.
And I understand that, but this looks like about a 40% increase, right, across the taxpayers of Virginia?
No, sir, it would be a 6% increase.
I know it's 6% to your budget, but it's 40% on the taxpayers, I think most of these people sitting in this room would agree that they have a 40% tax increase on their properties, 30 to 40%.
Yeah, and we're going to talk about that in just a moment.
Oh.
In just a moment, we'll talk about that, because I, I have the same concerns that you will have too.
Well, it just seems to be a touch imbalanced, and I just wanted for clarity to understand why your 6% seems to be 30 to 40% on my end, so.
Okay, so.
How do you go up, Mr. Thomas?
No, and I don't want to disagree, I mean, I'm not going to disagree with the 20%, the county raised most properties in Virginia, okay, I'm not disagreeing with that, but the numbers of the tax, we'll say that Virginia city tax on my property was 250 last year, and now it's the proposed, I mean, it's not there yet, is 360 to 370, so, that is a 30 to 40% increase, right?
And your value did go up on your property, correct?
So, it's, you know, your 6% doesn't quite equate to my 40%.
How much did your property go up in value?
About 20%, so, I think, you know, and I have the property tax statement, so it's like 68,000 to 83,000 for market value. I know the county says, do you think you can sell your property for that market value? I think everybody in town would agree, we can sell our property for that market value, right? I'm not, I'm not disputing those numbers, what I'm really looking at is 250 to 368 or whatever the proposed is, right?
Okay, so, Mr. Thomas, valid point, no question about that, these are proposed for 2020, this, right here, this 2020 budget of 295,000 levy is based upon 2019 market values, not 2020.
I know, but I'm not disputing that number with you.
Right, so, it goes down to valuation, right? So the valuation of your property, I'll give you an example, my property valued 185,000, somewhere in there, so, my value didn't change, but my property taxes went up a lot, you know, a significant amount of money, because of three things, and I broke it down, the, based on this, without increasing my value at all, it's based on my current 185,000 I pay, it would be an increase of 70 dollars a year on my city taxes, 74 dollars a year on my property taxes, and 200 and some dollars on my school taxes with a new levy for the school.
No, but we're not hiring a school, we're not looking at county.
Right, right.
We're just looking at Virginia, while we're here, right?
Right, and so the valuation that's done was not done by the City of Virginia, now the valuation that was done by St. Louis County, will the city benefit from that valuation increase? Yes, not this year.
About a 20% increase.
Yeah, we'll, we'll reap the benefit of that.
Right, so why, why, I guess my question is then, an additional 6%, I mean, if the city is reaping a 20% increase, right, over a portion of the city, okay, not all of it, I understand some were assessed at the right values, but you are going to see a percentage increase just because the market values go up, right?
But we don't, we won't get, that in 2020.
You won't get it in 2020, so we come right back to 295,000 amortized over the City of Virginia, right?
For 2020, right.
For 2020, so, if there's 3,000, I don't know how many properties are in the City of Virginia, 4,800.
Or 800, right.
So, I mean, 4,800, if the average home was raised 100 dollars, it's 400,000, right? I mean, that's pretty simple math, right? So, and I'm sure there's a percentage of people here that are well above 100, upwards of 300 or 400 that theirs went up, right, so, but there's the bottom side of it, so we take the mean, we cut off the top and the bottom, we take the mean, and somewhere in there, the equation does not work, I mean, you're well above 295,000, in my estimation. I tell you what, I just kind of like to understand the math better, right?
If I can explain a little bit, Mr. Thomas, it's kind of like a, it's like a pie, honestly, and the pie is the dollar amount that we levy every year, and it's the pieces of the pie that change, so our dollar amount is still going to stay what we set it at.
Correct.
Even though it's going up 20%, your piece just got bigger for apparent reasons, value, whatever it may be, the readjustment or whatever, but the pie's still the same, the pie didn't get any bigger, our levy's still the same, so even though you saw a 20% increase, it just means your slice got bigger, not the pie itself.
But these costs did not go up 30%.
No, and neither did our levy.
Right?
Our levy didn't go up either, our levy's still, it was going up 6%, you're just paying 20% more of that 6% levy than you were before.
Exactly.
Yes.
Why am I paying 40% more of that levy that's gone up only 6% on your end?
And that would be a county question.
I think that would be most everybody's question here.
And that would be a valuation and a county question.
Not, no, be- because, I mean, I still look at.
Even if we, I have a feeling, even if we cut it down to zero, you're still going to see an increase in your taxes next year because of the way the valuation was done.
Because of the market value of the property, and I understand that, so I'm thinking that's 20% that the county raised, I just didn't talk to.
They made your piece bigger, so now you've got a bigger piece of the pie.
Correct, correct, but that increases your piece of the pie as well.
No, we still have, our levy is still set at 26 million, doesn't get any bigger.
Going back to then, why is, why do I have the 30% increase, right? Not going to take any more of your time, because this still doesn't make a whole bunch of sense to me, right?
Nice mention, something here, Mayor.
Councilor, first, let's, Sherri, then Councilor Paulson, Sherri?
Sorry, Councilor.
Go ahead, Sherri.
Sir, I did get to talk to Quinn Carlson from the county, he said in Virginia alone, the residential market value, market value went up, and our commercial went down, we lost two major businesses in the City of Virginia.
Didn't catch the last part?
We lost two major commercial businesses in the City of Virginia within the last couple of years. That means that levy gets spread through the residential.
But what, okay, but what two commercial properties?
You know, I've been trying to twist my mind around this, I think Herberger's would have been one.
We're talking properties, we aren't talking businesses, we're talking property.
Yeah, but they're commercial, and their rate is a little higher.
What are the two major properties that made such a significant?
Herberger's, Bob, Herberger's is one.
Yeah, but the building didn't go anywhere.
That doesn't make any difference, the value of that building went down because there's no occupancy, and the equipment and stuff is gone, everything inside.
The value of the building, the value of the building went down because there's, the business is not inside of it?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All over right now, it's just shell.
It's all, it's just a shell, there's nothing, it was all taken away.
So now that Hobby Lobby is there, then it's gonna, this will be reduced then, because that business going in there makes that building more valuable.
But that won't be until 2021, because they're not completed, they're at a partial tax right now, or maybe nothing right now, because they're not completed with their renovation, so that'll go out a year from now. They won't be valued until 2020 for the value that replaces.
So my businesses, if I'm going to reconstruct my business, there's nobody inside my building, my property taxes, I'm going to have zero property taxes, is that what you're telling me?
No, not totally zero.
Definitely not totally zero.
But you've got to remember, Herberger's went bankrupt too, so.
So I also think now I own businesses in this town, right, and pay property taxes, and I'm not disputing that they are due, and I did see in fact that, and I mean, you want to generate, then I talked with the honorable Mayor, Mr. Cuffey here, and he wants to do some street projects, was my understanding, and certainly that there are projects that the City of Virginia wants to run, that, but in fact, business did go down, so I looked at my business properties, and those taxes went down, which really is, I guess, a blessing, but, but the fact is, business probably uses more streets and more service in the City of Virginia than anybody, right? So I'm going to pay it on one way, one end or the other, I'm really not beating it, right? I'm just curious about how the system works, right? So, and I'm just as unclear now as I was when I walked in the door.
I think if you peel away the onion, it's about valuation, so just hang on to that thought for just a minute, Mr. Thomas, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, and I'm actually learning this process as well, I mean, it's frustrating when, it's hard for me to even begin to explain this, you know, because I don't quite understand it myself, but from what I'm gathering is that if there's a big, the pie doesn't change except for the 6% increase, but because values are ebbing and flowing, or increasing or decreasing, each person that has that slice of the pie will be either getting an increase, or some people getting decreases. So some people are getting a decrease, how, do we have a percentage over all of what percentage of 4,500 homes or 4,800 homes, of that number, how many were increased, decreased, or stayed the same, does the county have those figures?
Yes, they do.
I would like to see those figures.
They're out in the hallway, oh, they just closed the door, so.
Oh, okay.
But, Mr. Thomas, if you could just hold on for just one second, here's the deal, for me, I agree, I'm sorry, Councilor Paulson, are you? Okay, thank you. The frustrating part for you, I think, and for me and for everybody else, is that here you get a devaluation, the city used to do in our own assessing, we basically do one-fifth of the city every five years, okay, we do one-fifth, one-fifth, and so, when we lost our assessor after retirement and advertised for another assessor, was unable to get any applicants, the law requires the county to take over, and so that's what happened, the county took over the assessing, and they didn't assess the properties for five years, okay, they made some adjustments based on sales and those kind of things, made some adjustments, but now, they came in this last year, and they, they did everybody's house, everybody's property, in one, in one, in one shot, and so, when a whole bunch of people came, including myself, to truth and tax, to the, to question the proposed increase in your property taxes, it was a concern, and the concern is about, hey, my taxes are going to go up, but guess what happens? You don't know how much your taxes are going to go up until December, because that's when they tell you how much your taxes are going to go up, and when I, when I knew that the school was going to raise the taxes, but I didn't realize that my taxes would go up as high, or my brother's taxes, it went from 3,700 to 4,800 a year, I mean, how does that work? And it's about, it's about valuation, it's about valuation of the property, and the valuation of the property isn't done by the city, it's done by St. Louis County, and when they came in and evaluated all this property, from my perspective, I think there's a lot of properties that are way overvalued, that's just from a layperson's perspective, there's some kind of formula that the county uses, use a different kind of a system than we did, and this is so, this is what they value the property at, so who's going to glean the benefit from the property values that the county has, has proposed for 2020, who has raised based upon this sheet right here, I mean, we have, we have, we're going to benefit from it in 2021, because when your taxes, when your value's increased, we get a piece of that pie, the county gets it, of course, the school is the highest, because they do school levies on there, but the city gets an increase in that too. but the city gets a, an increase in that too, and so, yes, we are gonna benefit from that, and next year's budget will reflect that. But this year's budget does not reflect that, a forty or twenty percent increase, or thirty or forty, or whatever everybody else is getting here.
Well, I guess, I tell you, the only thing I would say is it takes very little, it takes very little to overtax your citizens. You should be careful of that, so, uh, there's a fair amount of people that will be, this adjustment will, in fact, cripple a lot of people in Virginia, so, and you just step lightly, because I don't know that it's a win-win-win, right? I mean, I'll adjust, I'm young enough to adjust, but you have a percentage of people that will not adjust.
And, you know, I agree, I don't think it's a win-win-win, it's for the, for the, for the consumer, for the residentialized property in Virginia, it's, it's a huge burden, it's a big adjustment they have to make to their budget moving forward, and I wish these property values, evaluations were a little bit more modest than they are. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, talking to the county about the formula and how the, how the county, uh, rates these properties, it's not just Virginia that got, sees some significant increases, there are other communities around, around our Quad Cities that have done the same. And Duluth apparently is making, has to make some adjustments, we'll say, on their commercial property, so, this formula is.
Is it not the perfect storm then, that the county came in and reassessed a good portion of Virginia?
All of it.
I mean, all of it?
Yeah.
And that the city of Virginia all of a sudden wants to levy at six percent, right? And have you not created the perfect storm for your taxpayers, right?
Well, we didn't know what those taxes are gonna be, or how the proposals were gonna affect, we, we proposed us, based on the two thousand nineteen valuations, not the current valuations that are scheduled for two thousand twenty, so we had no idea.
But you're well aware now.
We are, and so, an adjustment to the levy will be made when these taxes increases are realized in two thousand twenty-one. So, we'll have to reassess where we're at, so the question for us today at this Truth and Taxation is for this council to decide, and to hear from all of you, that we propose a six percent, which, with, with revenues and expenditures, gives us a six hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollar, um, uh, what do you call it? Surplus, so if we reduce the levy of six percent and put a zero levy, then we, uh, will have a buffer, uh, surplus of three hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars.
So you have to decide that.
Yes.
There'd be six percent, or three percent, or whatever you, whatever you determine to be the magic number.
Right, and so, I guess I would ask you, Mr. Thomas, what do you think about this levy? You think it's unreasonable, or do you think it's something that needs to be adjusted based upon the budget as proposed this evening?
I think that you have, in fact, the perfect storm, and I think that, uh, I think that you're gonna cripple a lot of your, your taxpayers, as I, as I made suggested earlier, whether or not you need your six percent all this year, or three percent this year, and three percent next year, uh, it would certainly be easier for people to digest, right? And they would at least perhaps know what's coming at them, right? I mean, this year, I think, was, as you can tell, I think you see that there's some interest in what people are having to pay, right? And those that are, can make, that have made it here, and, and that want to hear that, they wanna protest, but, but we have elected you to make these decisions, okay? So we put our good faith in your hands, right, and you will have to do what you think is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, uh, Mr. Lindberg, please come forward, and, uh, we know you, but please state your name for the record, thank you.
Uh, Dennis Lindberg.
Mr. Lindberg, welcome.
I guess I'm at the wrong meeting, I thought this was a Truth and Taxation, not a city meeting.
Yes, this is Truth and Taxation.
I got a problem, I got a problem, forty percent on one property, all right, forty percent. Now, I'm not for drive-by appraisals, and obviously, this is what they all were, drive-by, drive-by appraisals. Because nobody contacted me about going in my property, going through my property, to come up with this forty percent increase, or thirty-nine percent increase. Now, how can they, how can they, and I, I think that we used to do it every four years, if I'm correct.
No, it's every five.
Was it five, okay.
Right.
And, uh.
A one-fifth of the city each year.
When they were doing that, they would come up, knock on the door, let you go through your house, if you didn't go through, too bad. Now, nobody came up and knocked on any of my doors.
Dennis, they did leave, and they were around the whole neighborhoods, because they were in my whole neighborhood knocking on the doors. If you weren't home, they were supposed to leave a card and an informational, and they did do that, so I don't know why you didn't get them.
Wasn't done on any of my, any of the three properties or four properties that I own in the city right now.
I saw them doing it in my neighborhood when somebody wasn't home, they left their card.
And my other question is.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Lindberg.
Proposed for two thousand twenty, that doesn't include the new school, does it? Huh? That's in there? The school's in here?
Yeah, the school is in that, in that.
For two thousand twenty, okay, fine, so, I guess what I wanna know is, can I get somebody to combine my property to inspect it? To reassess it, I don't know.
Well, Mr. Lindberg, I think that, and, you know, you're, you make, you make valid point about your assessment, how much, it's way too high, and that you wish somebody would have contacted you, the county had given us information, given us letters, given us assurances that they went to every single business, every single home, to try to get in there and assess your property, and their policy is, is that if they can't get in your property, they won't, they won't hear your appeal in April, so, uh, they wanna make sure you get into your property.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, they never did.
So then, my, my suggestion is to you, the, the city, as you know, as a former city councilor, uh, for many years, that, you know, the assessment changed of now than before, right, so, it's the, it's the valuation that you're concerned about, right?
All I'm asking, all I'm asking is that somebody from the county assessor comes through this property and assesses it, as it way it should be.
Uh, Mr. Lindberg, they're right outside, you, you can go talk to them, and they'll come and reevaluate your property. We've asked them to come to the meeting, they can't come in in the Truth and Taxation, but they are outside to address that issue for you.
It's fine, okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Lindberg. Sir, please come forward, uh, please state your name for, for the record, please, and welcome to the council meeting.
Carl Schmidt, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Member of the council, good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I'll make this quick.
Yep.
Um, okay, so, what Mr. Lindberg said was true, it was a drive-by assessors, I never got any notification, and neither did my mom. Um, and I've got the proof right here that it's a drive-by.
Okay.
Okay, mine went up twenty-nine percent, and I understand it's gonna go up, we've all made improvements, we had to do new heating systems on our houses and all that, so, mine went up twenty-nine point one percent, I understand that. My mom's went up a hundred and fourteen point nine percent, this is the proof that they're doing drive-bys and they're just throwing out random numbers there. They had her house, which is older than mine, almost ninety-five thousand dollars. Now, if they want to give me ninety-five thousand dollars right now, I'll take it, and I'll run to the bank laughing at them. It's not worth that much, it's not, I wish it was, but it's not, it's, they've got hers valued higher than mine. Nothing's been done on her house, still on the old steam system, nothing's been done, she's a ninety-year-old widow, she can't afford that, a hundred and fourteen point nine percent. Now, I asked the county assessor, Sarah Simic, why it went up, she blamed all of you. She blamed the city of Virginia, and she, her words were, God, the city assessor wasn't doing her job, that's her words.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I don't believe that, I think they're passing the buck, but you need to hold her accountable for lying and saying stuff like that. And if it is true, then you need to hold the former assessor accountable, but I don't think it's true, I think they're just passing the buck. But that needs to be addressed, she needs to come in here and explain to all of you why she told me that.
What I can tell you, Mr. Schmidt, is, uh, unfortunately, we had to go with the county to do the assessors, and I say that unfortunately, you know, and I mean that. We were the last city in St. Louis County to go with the county, we wanted a new assessor, we couldn't get one, so, bottom line is, he took over, okay? So, when the city, county staff came over to do a conversion on their computer system as opposed to ours, which are different, they made a proposal and a presentation to the council, and they indicated to the council that we would, we, our city assessors did their due diligence, they were professional, they had the valuations correct and accurate, within the ninety-five percentile that the county requires and that the state looks at, and that we were good to go. So for her to say that doesn't make any sense to me.
I think she should be held accountable, because I didn't agree with her, but she should be, you holler in here and ask her why she said that.
And, Mr. Schmidt, and it is, and as, you know, it's a valuation issue, and if we were to evaluate that property, you should be holding us accountable, and I'd be ashamed, you know, all you could, you know, whatever needs to be done, but we didn't value the property. The county valued it, right, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so now, we are, me, and maybe some of the other councillors, and those who are sitting in the aisle, are suffering as a result of that valuation process, which you deem to be, um, uh, excessive, and I, I agree.
And we're gonna have them come and reassess it, and we didn't get any cards.
Well, that's unfortunate.
But, but when you look at the numbers, a hundred and fourteen point nine percent compared to mine twenty-nine, you gotta admit, there's something wrong there. That's, it's not even close.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, Councilor Bearable.
Carl, on this, everybody is looking at these, but there is a, there is a mechanism, and everybody has to understand what this mechanism is. It happens in April of twenty twenty, or somewhere around that timeframe, it's what we call the equalization board. We sit on there as councillors, that's where you wanna come and complain, set up an appointment about those valuations. We have the authority either, lower them, and usually, if you come in and we'll look at them, most of them with reassessment by the county and looking at it, will actually go down. But I am going to take what you said about that assessor and her verbal statements, because I've been on this council the whole time when we had our city assessor, and every time the state reviews those along with the county, and we have to be from ninety-one percent to a hundred and, I believe, five percent, we're always in the ninety-five to ninety-six percentile. We were compliant every year I'd been on this council, so, I'm gonna go after that individual assessor, it's, there's no sense that they're telling you a non-truth on this, but the equalization board is where you can test these valuations.
Yep, and her name is Sarah Simic.
I know who she is, I know who she is.
Yep, so, and I understand it's gonna go up, fine, I understand, we've all made improvements and all that, that's understandable, but this percentage is wrong.
And.
Numbers don't match.
And, and what you've indicated with respect to the, the valuation, Councilor Bearable indicated that you can come to, in April to evaluation, you can contest it, we could take a look at the property, recommendation to the county that may be a lower it. Whenever we recommend a property be lowered, we try to do our due diligence and look at it, says, look, we think this property is way overvalued. And there were like a hundred and sixteen, uh, individuals, I think, that came in to contest that, but we, we, we only have a narrow area under the law to make those adjustments, and whenever we reduce a property, the county finds another place to raise and try to keep that valuation there, so that makes it very difficult, so, by going to the, to contest your valuation is one thing, but the, the flaw in this entire system is always, you don't know what those taxes are gonna be, and now you realize that now your valuations are way up, and you see your taxes go way up, but you, you know what the valuation is, but you don't know what the taxes are until December, and then, then the county tells you, and we tell you, go back and get it contested back in April, well, how do you know that? We don't know what your taxes are gonna be, I mean, it makes no sense, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you.
Let's go to Councilor Johnson first, before we go back, Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, I think one of the things that we really need to remember is that some properties in the city of Virginia have not been evaluated in, in like nine years, if you look at the five years and the five years, um, so that's one thing to keep in mind. I will tell you that my overall tax, the number at the bottom, went up two hundred and forty percent. My property value over-doubled, I got the thing in the mail, went, oh, that's interesting, and I reached out to the county. Everybody in this room got a yellow slip or whatever color it was way back in April, and that's the opportunity, as the mayor said, to come in and go, this isn't right, come in, I made an appointment with Sean Haney, he came into my house, because if you're not there, I did get a card, so if you didn't, um, you know, that would be something to contact your commissioner, county commissioner about, that, that's their staff. Um, and I made the phone call, and, or I think I actually talked to him here, they came out and dropped my property value by two thousand dollars, because the assessment had that my house had a finished basement in it, I have some rocks in my basement and a concrete floor. I have a friend who lives in Midway who had a completely finished house with quite the amenities in her basement, and when, when the county assessor came, found that she too had a basement with nothing in it, so, so to point fingers at assessors, I don't think is an appropriate thing. People do the best job they can with the tools they are given, and it is, you're right, Mr. Thomas, it is the perfect storm of city, county, and school district, everything's happening all at once, but we have to keep in mind that the streets are plowed with that money, I get paid, thank you very much, with that money, it's not much, but I do get paid because of that. Everybody in this room, sitting up here, our, our staff that work very hard get paid with that money. This isn't money that we're just taking and, and getting rid of, it is money that is using to help your quality of life. Is it the best right now? It's as good as we can do it right now, we're trying, we're looking at ways to improve your quality of life, improve, improve my quality of life. It doesn't happen for free, six percent is a lot, yes, but it's not ten percent. We, we have aging, this building is aging, it would be great if we could replace all of these, but we have a heater down here, because the heat in this room is terrible, that is this entire building, so we are doing things that we're not spending ten percent or fifteen percent levies, so we are doing our best, and I would remind all of you, you're all welcome on May, in May, to pay the ten dollars and run for city council, we need help, we don't know everything, I'm not, I'm, I'm a, I'm a teacher. I'm not a tax expert, but as Councilor Paulson said, I'm learning, I'm learning about this stuff, I'm learning, I go talk to Sherry regularly, because I don't understand, and she shows me it, and the accounting world is completely different than your bank account, I can guarantee that, it's a whole different world. So know that as frustrated as you are, I am also, and we are working to do our best, appreciate all of you coming out for tonight, and, you know, if you have ideas on how we can spend less, don't tell us, send us an email, because we'll, we don't remember, we, you know, things get lost in translation. You can email the city at any time, send us your recommendations, that's why I'm here, is to listen to you, and to see if we can make, we, we've done a lot of stuff in this city to change little things here and there, uh, and, and it's been working out for the most part, so, um, again, I appreciate you all for coming in and thanking for listening to me.
I have a couple of things I'd like to bring forward with respect to the tax gap person, but I'm gonna wait, first I'm gonna go to Councilor Paulson, and then the gentleman in the back, you come forward, and just in one moment, please, thank you, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's my intention to let, um, people, you know, come up and speak, I do, I do have a couple of questions, so, do we have a contract with the county for assessing? There's no contract, has there, how did that happen, like it just happened?
Well, there's a law that says that we have to have an assessor assigned to assess the properties in Virginia. We had an assessor department here, obviously, and those assessors retired, well, the assessor and then the assistant that retired, and so we advertised for another assessor, we are the only city in Seamus County that had a private assessor left, and so, we tried to get another assessor. We couldn't get anybody to bite, so what happens is, is when you can't do that, then the county comes in and takes over, and we don't, it didn't cost us anything. Did you have anything, any more to add, Rick, is that, so that's, that's where we're at?
Do it for free.
I do, that was.
Yeah, it doesn't cost us anything, well, I take that back, it costs us plenty, right?
You don't get a billing from the county for assessing, or you don't have a contract with them at this point in time, they just took it over because of the law.
So when the gentleman that just came up, um, in the back there, came up and said he had, um, proof in writing that it was just a drive-by, that's concerning to me, if, if we were guaranteed, or, is there a percentage they have to do walkthroughs and drive-bys only, or is there a, I mean, are we given any information as a city governing body of how this process has been conducted?
Let me tell you how it was supposed to work, because I was here when we did this, they were supposed to knock on every single door and business in this community, that was their, uh, what we were told they would. That was their, uh, what we were told they would do. Now, if that did not happen, that is a huge concern for myself as a counselor. If those individuals, they're supposed to leave a card with a note that you had an opportunity to call their office, to have a schedule for somebody going, that's what was supposed to happen. If that did not happen, then this is a flaw in St. Louis County's part, period.
So I guess I'd like to visit that going forward, knowing that, I mean, if there's no contract, there's no, I mean, are they, uh, where does the parameters come from? Is it a state guideline, a county guideline? Where did, where did the guidelines come from?
Guidelines came from St. Louis County to equalize all of the type of evaluations in all of St. Louis County. And I believe it's based on some different formulas depending if it's commercial, if it's residential, rental, whatever it may be.
So it follows the St. Louis County guidelines-
That's correct.
-across any city or community within-
Because all of St. Louis County is now assessed by-
And I, if we could get a-
They have a formula.
If we could get a copy of those guidelines, maybe request that, um, that would be helpful. And I, I didn't mean to take time. I want people to speak, but I just wanted to clarify that and I am concerned about the, uh, the, the drive-by that, the card that you got. I think that's, that's concerning. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Sir, uh, in the blue, in the third row, would you like to come up, please? And then we'll have, I recognize Mr. Dinko in the back next. So, sir, please come forward and, and, uh, would you please state your name for the, for the record and welcome to the council meeting?
Yeah, my name is Dwayne Arvola.
Mr. Arvola, how are you?
I live on, uh, North Side.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I'm kinda concerned about the taxes for the elderly people.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, uh, what I'd like to know, do you have any, uh, plans to, uh, cut the taxes for the people over like sixty-five? Because, uh, my taxes went from, are going up from thirty-four ninety-eight to forty-six ninety. And that's quite a bit of money because I don't get that kind of money. I, uh, had one of the higher paying jobs in mine, but, uh, my income from that is, I'm in Social Security, is only gonna be thirteen hundred and ninety dollars. And all the money that you get for pension goes for our healthcare. It isn't even enough. It's about two, three hundred dollars short a month. So that's the way it goes. And I was wondering if you have any plans to, uh, in your, because the taxes are going up and because if I didn't have no other income, I'd be up to creek with no paddle. And, but there's a lot of people that, uh, that are my age and they're trying to struggle in keeping their homes because, um, they wanna be home instead of going into a nursing home. And the nursing homes, they're kind of expensive. Our neighbor, they paid over four thousand dollars a month until their, their property money ran out. And then, of course, this county takes over. It would be a lot cheaper for, uh, if the taxes were lower and the people could stay in their homes and everybody would be better off, don't you think?
Well, I agree. Uh, and here's, if I may answer your question. The, the county values property, not who lives in it. So if you're eighty years old or you're ninety years old or you're twenty-five years old, the county just looks at what the property is valued at and they tax you based upon that. Now, what I'd ask you to, we don't have a program, Mr. Arvola, that can reduce your taxes based on your age. We, we don't have a policy. We don't have a process. I don't even know i- i- if it's legal for us to do that moving forward. But I do know that what I would ask you to do, I think what we would all ask you to do is to see, go see the county, uh, uh, assessor that's outside. And there, there might be a program available for assistance, for tax assistance. I don't know if they do or not, but I would ask them. We don't have anything in the city of Virginia for that, right? So, I mean-
Yeah, I, that's what I was wondering. It's, uh, we have this, uh, big problem of, uh, drugs and so much of our taxes goes for that.
Yeah, for your medications?
Yeah, for illegal drugs. And, uh, which we never had when we were kids. But, uh, we had it in Babbitt where I lived, brought our kids up. And, uh, there's so much, uh, problems there that in nineteen seventy-two, two of our kids, uh, neighbors' kids got, our friends' kids got killed in a car accident and so did the person who had, who was on drugs. And, and then that wasn't the only one. We had another neighbor that was hit by a drunk, uh, person on drugs. She was drugged three hundred feet under the car and, uh, things like that happened. And so then after, in seventy-two, then I went and counted the, uh, people who were interned in the Babbitt cemetery at the time. Out of ninety-three, seventy-four were under thirty years old and most of them were killed in car accidents and, and because of alcohol and mostly drugs.
Yeah.
And here we have a state now that wants to go on recreational drugs. I rented a lot of properties in Virginia and you, many of the young guys weren't working, didn't do nothing, and they were on drugs and all their lives were wasted.
And, and that is a huge social challenge, Mr. Arvola, no question about that. Um, so, I mean, that's something that's, uh, that government and the cities and the, and the law enforcement and, and are trying, the healthcare professionals are trying to get a handle on. And, you know, you was talking about nineteen seventy-two, it's, you know, there is, it still hasn't changed. It's been getting progressively worse in some areas and others, different kind of drugs and those kind of things. So I know that it, it, that's a burden on the community. For you, for your taxes and this significant increase that you have with respect to a home that you built, a home that you worked toiled hard for just for everybody else's room, and now you're paying a, you, you're assessed a tax that you can't afford to pay or you're gonna have difficulty paying. It's about your valuation. And I would respectfully ask you, Mr. Arvola, or we would respectfully ask you, if to go see, to talk to the county assessor over there and see if they can make an adjustment or take a look at your property to make that determination.
Yeah. Yeah, it isn't too, um, bad yet, but, uh, if I live for another ten years, then I'd probably be hurting pretty bad.
Well, we hope that doesn't happen, but, you know, who knows what the future brings, right?
But I'd like to see the councils and the cities put in a few words against drugs too, because there's people working their heads off trying to keep drugs out from, uh, well, you can't even go in their mine and they ain't got a job if you've got drugs.
Oh, yeah, we, we, we are well aware of that, sir.
And, uh, I'm sure appreciate the way that you went. The cities went for, uh, help to get more jobs in the area.
Yeah.
I'd sure like to see people, the cities, uh, fight the drugs a little harder.
Well, we, we, we make our best effort to do so, Mr. Arvola.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
The county is, uh, folks are leaving, so if you need to talk to them, they better get out there and catch them.
Okay.
So, there-
Yeah, would you please take a walk out there, Mr. Arvola?
Can I offer one thing?
Yes.
If I may.
Yes.
I just went on the St. Louis County Minnesota.gov website.
Yes.
And there is a program that says senior citizen property tax deferral. Um, and it's a percentage, if you're sixty-five or older, your household income is sixty thousand dollars or less, the amount of property tax that you will be responsible for paying will be three percent of your household income. But the way that it appears to work is that it's a lien against your home, but there, it seems to be there, there is some sort of a program to possibly help facilitate you or bridge that for you.
Just take you out there. Thank you, uh, Counselor Beyondich. Sir, would you like to come forward here?
Mayor, can I?
And while, while Mr. Dinko's coming forward, go ahead, Counselor Bearable.
Just for everybody that's, uh, sitting in this room, there is a, uh, form called an M-one PR form that, uh, if your taxes go up on your property more than twelve percent, but have to be more than a hundred dollars, there is a program where you can put, fill out this form, uh, where you can get a maximum back on your taxes up to a thousand dollars depending on the level. It's, uh, called the M-one PR form. And that's, there's no income maximum for income on this. That's another way you can get it back.
And that, and that form is on the table out there.
Yeah. But, uh, the, do we have the new nineteen form? We have the new nineteen forms, okay? Because I didn't know if they were out yet. Uh, but that is, uh, the rules have not changed, so you just read it. But that is a mechanism to get some dollars back if your property taxes have gone up more than twelve percent or more than a hundred dollars.
Thanks for coming in, Mr. Arvola. Okay, for the record, Mr. Dinko, your name?
Uh, David Dinko.
Mr. Dinko, welcome.
Thank you. Um, but, you know, just sitting here, is there not some liability of the city having some control over the county auditor? I mean, fine, we have the county auditor because you don't have one, but in my defense, I was out there talking to the auditors. They came to my property. They didn't leave anything, but they looked at my property without me being there. I mean, it's my property. It isn't my employee's property. It isn't anyone else's property. It's mine. And I feel I have the right, if they're on my property, to know that they're on my property. And I just learned twenty minutes ago they were on my property to assess my property. I mean, obviously, there's, there's a lot of people and there's a glitch in the system between the city and the county. There has to be some, some liability with the city of Virginia, us taxpayers, who's, I mean, we can go out there and talk to them all we want, but I got nowhere. And if you wanna know about properties and seven hundred and twenty-four percent-
Is that on your business property?
Yes. And this is on a piece of property I mow the grass on. I'd have no problem if my taxes, which they did go up on my business property, were my buildings. You know, I have no problem paying my share, but seven hundred and twenty-four percent on a piece of bare property? That's a hard chunk to swallow.
It is. And I also have a piece of bare property, not that it satisfies you, went up nine hundred ninety-three percent property behind my yard. I, I mean, unbelievable. I don't get it.
Is it residential, industrial?
It's a residential.
Yeah, this is industrial. This is going up eleven thousand five hundred dollars. And I hear, yep, we get paid by taxpayer money. I have to go out and work harder, more hours, and try to find more work to pay this. Um, I just, I have no problem paying my fair share, but this is, just listening in here, th- there's a problem when, when, when you're telling us to go talk to the auditors out there, but we're at the city meeting and we put our money towards this city. I, my whole family has businesses here. This is, this is asinine.
I, I can't disagree. We have, we have no, uh, we have no control over the valuation process.
I, I get that, but you should have some control over the assessors and what they are doing for you.
Well, I wish we did.
Well, there's gotta be something that-
Well-
We wanted to make policies earlier. There should be a policy about assessors coming into the city of Virginia assessing our properties. This is the city of Virginia, which is technically St. Louis County, but we live in Virginia.
We could, we could contact the county. We could meet with the, uh, county commissioner, the head assessor, Mr. Orent, and, uh, try to get them to come to an agreement that when they come to assess somebody's property, that they talk to the proprietor and assess it when the proprietor is available. And we can make that request. I mean, we can't mandate it, but we could certainly make an effort to do so.
I mean, every, everyone benefits off this, you know, except the taxpayer, I guess.
Well, that's true.
And hopefully we benefit, you know, with our services and stuff. And I'm all about that, but I'm just, I think there's a flaw when Mr. Bearable says, yes, there should be a card in your door, there should be this. How many people said they didn't get anything?
Agreed.
And for somebody to come on my property and I have an employee there and they go through my, my, my full property? I don't think that's right.
No, and, and you can refuse, he, he could have refused, but he didn't know that, right? He didn't know that.
He doesn't know who the county assessor is.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And what's he gonna say? He's an employee. It should, it should be, if David Dinko's property is on this slip, I should be the guy he's talking to, nobody else. I don't care if it's a city assessor, county assessor, whatever it may be. And I have no problem walking them through my property, but when I get something that goes up seven hundred and twenty-four percent and just one piece of property is gonna go up almost twelve thousand dollars? I, you know, I, I just don't know where I'm gonna make up twelve thousand dollars.
I, I don't, I, 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 I'm frustrated.
I'm dumbfounded by this.
I am too. I don't understand, I don't understand that process. I don't understand that process.
I have other properties, thirty-four percent, twenty-two percent, you know, a thousand bucks here, a thousand bucks there. I'm good with it.
Uh, how much is your city portion on that? Does it say?
Fifty-five hundred dollars. It went up from six hundred and twenty-five dollars to five thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars.
And, and the issue, the issue there-
That's five thousand dollars.
And when I talk to the county assessor, and this doesn't satisfy you, but I, I, it's aside, the same frustration you do, I talk to the county assessor, why did you tell me this when you came to my property?
Because he didn't talk to me.
And went through my property and didn't tell me that you're gonna raise my, my back lock six, nine hundred and ninety-three percent. Didn't say that.
Right. But I didn't even have a chance to talk to anybody. That's wrong.
Well, that's the point I'm making.
Yeah.
You know, that you should have the opportunity to have some conversation with them. That's true.
Right.
I don't, there's not a lot that I'm aware of on the books that-
But I mean, when, when my property taxes went out there last time, you had an assessor here. I came in here, it was explained to me. It was one-on-one. All we're getting now is go talk to these guys out in the hallway? That doesn't work for me.
No.
If you look at what I pay in taxes in the city of Virginia, it doesn't work for me.
Well, when your taxes go fifty-five hundred dollars, your city portion, there's something inherently wrong with that.
That's just on one.
And that the valuation is, right? The county's responsibility? And here we are passing a buck to you, telling you to go over there and see the county when we're helpless? We have no authority. We have no way, no leverage to make a change for that. And the county makes that decision? That is-
I don't think that's right. That's why I have things in the city of Virginia. I grew up here. I live here. But now it's like, why am I dealing with St. Louis County for a city issue? That's how I feel.
Mr. Dinko-
Normally you wouldn't, but in this particular case, it's taxes. Counselor Bearable?
Come to the equalization board in April because those can still be adjusted if, uh, the board, and the board is local. It's we as counselors that sit on that board. So come to, it will, notice will be in the paper, what, a couple of weeks ahead, Rick? A month ahead?
Heck, I think they can adjust them right now. You go see them. They come back out to your property, you go out with them. That's ridiculous.
Well, I just feel there should be something in place where the city has some sort of control over the assessors that come into our town.
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Dinko, let's, let's, let's see if we can find out if there is something that we can do. Let's, let's, let's research that and get back to you and find out, is there something that we can do? that we can do? Is there a way that we can leverage? Is there some, something we can do?
I appreciate it.
Because I'm with you, 100%.
Well, appreciate your time again.
Well, thank you, Mr. Dinko.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please come forward, sir, and please state your name for the record and welcome to the council meeting.
I'm Mayor Cuffey and Counselors, I'm Jerry Patrini, I live in Midway.
Yes, Mr. Patrini.
Um, on the road from you, as a matter of fact.
Yes, you do. Beautiful home there.
Um, we built there about 24 years ago. We bought 20 acres of tax forfeit land, built a new home.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the first time I've come to a tax or budget meeting. Uh, it's always been reasonable, the increases, I thought. But, um, this year, I was just shocked when I opened my statement, you know, my taxes are about $5,200 a year on a $253,000 evaluation. And it just seems to me I could live in Florida or the Twin Cities and pay less than that. You know, my dad has a house in East Bethel. It's assessed at 365. Um, the market value is like 450, so the assessment value is quite a bit less than market value. He pays 3,600 a year. The county doing the assessing, they say they want to assess at market value. So I just don't understand the logic why they're assessing at market value. When most houses I've looked at in other towns and states, the assessed value is quite a bit lower than the market value. So I think that might be one of the issues. Um, and then I own a house that I rent in Mountain Iron, in a storage building and about 12 parcels of property, and every one of those, they stayed the same, or they actually went down a little bit. I didn't, I don't know why that was either, but none of the property that I own in Mountain Iron went up at all. So I guess I'm just here to, to say that, you know, I think Virginia might run the risk of making Mountain Iron look more attractive to potential home buyers or home builders and even businesses. I mean, you know, Blue Cross shut down, I think it was in Hoyt Lakes, they shut down, sent people home. You know, we have Blue Cross here, when the property taxes go up that much, the building owner's gonna pass that on eventually to the renter. You know, Blue Cross might say, you know, we're just gonna have everyone work at home. We're gonna end up with an empty building that you can't rent because it's so big and taxes are so high, so I just don't, I don't know what the problem is. I've listened to all the different reasons for this, the county assessing things now and the, I know there's a school levy, which I understand that, and all these different levies, but I just don't think it's good for the city to, to pay $5,200 a year on a $250,000 house. Um, you know, that's just my, my two cents, I guess.
Well, you know, I agree. I mean, I think a lot of these processes are over assessed and, and we have no control over that, unfortunately, unless...
I didn't understand how that worked either. I didn't realize the city.
The county values, what they deem as be the market value, how they arrive at that market value is, is, is a mystery to me and how they, what they, what their formula is and how they use the evaluation. So if I may ask you a question, I know that a lot of the commercial properties went down, a lot of residential properties went up, so when the property goes down here, they gotta make that up somewhere to keep that percentile, 95 percentile in there. So when commercials go down, another commercial goes up, or residential goes down, another one goes up. So I know that you own a business in a very, uh, you've been a longtime business owner in the city of Virginia, you've invested a lot of money in a new facility moving forward. Did, did you get, if I may ask, your property taxes on your, on your business, did you have a significant change in that as well?
Yeah, that wasn't too bad. Now, the car wash went up. Uh, the value of that went up maybe $10,000. Taxes didn't go up that much, but, and then the, the parts store building, we've done some improvements, but the, uh, property, the property value on that was about the same. It didn't go up, but the car wash went up a little bit.
So the car wash, which you renovated and resurrected, it did a working facility, it was, but, so I guess the point I'm making is, your commercial property, you know, was fairly...
That wasn't too bad, yeah.
But then the residential property significantly increased. And, and I know that, no, because I live by you, no homes were sold in our area that would cause your or my taxes to go up as high as they did.
Yeah, we talked to the assessor back when that first happened and he gave, he emailed me five or six different houses that they compared us to. They were older, a lot of them, most of them were bigger.
Were they in Midway?
No, they weren't Midway.
They weren't near area.
Yeah.
Same with me, same exact thing. So I, I mean, I don't understand it. I'm just as frustrated as you, and you came here to us for answers that we can't give you. And that's frustrating to me and frustrating to everybody that's sitting here too.
The big problem is with the, the market value...
Yes.
...evaluations they're doing, so I don't know what their logic is, because a lot of other communities don't do that, but...
Well, they're saying that the, the, most of the homes have not been evaluated for five years or even longer, and so they're making up for lost time.
Yeah.
Well, increases should be incremental and, and over time.
They had also told me that the city had been doing it wrong too, so...
Yeah.
Which I think the city had the value about right, but...
Well, I, thank you, Mr. Patrini. Yes, I think that was correct, and the county was on board with us, doing its thing accurately. It's frustrating to me. If we were doing the, I'm gonna say this, uh, if we were doing the assessments, I, I do not believe that these, we would be, you would be here today.
Probably not.
You know, so...
It was just kind of a shock, so, but...
It is a shock.
I just wanted to bring that up since you gave us an opportunity to voice our concerns and...
Well, I, I appreciate it, Mr. Patrini, and I know the other issue that you had, we'll be getting in contact with you with respect to the four-wheeler and issue.
Oh, yeah, then there's gonna be a snowmobile trail behind my house.
Yep.
And a four-wheeler trail right in front of my mailbox, so...
Yep.
I might be able to argue that would lower my property value.
Likely so, and I'll be, I'll be with you. We'll go with you for that too, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patrini.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Baraboo, Counselor Baraboo.
Brett, where did we get their, or Sheri, these estimated market values with, with the taxes on there? Proposed from 20, from where they were, this sheet? Where did we get this? Because there's a huge flaw in this sheet.
County.
It's a huge flaw.
Counselor Baraboo, I got that yesterday from Quinn Carlson, St. Louis County Auditor.
Okay, this is absolutely wrong, okay? I have a house, I have a house valued, market value of $129,000. My taxes are 1,900 and some dollars. That's the rate for a $200,000 one proposed taxes for the city is, uh, is 1,994. What next? This, this sheet has gotta be screwed up.
I can give you his email and you can...
Right, right, Mr. Thomas?
There's something left on that.
Well, you know, you're looking at 2019 property estimates, it was 67, 25, 27, and then it proposed for 2020, it's gonna be a 79, 15 with a difference of 12, 32, 18, 3%. Yeah, that's right, that's fine, but when you're, when you had a house valued at $50,000 and now it's valued at $90,000, that triples what that cost is, right? It triples it, so, then there you have it. You know, it's a, I mean, I know I'm gonna... I know, come on up. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
That's interesting, because I sold a piece of property, it's a rental property, and, uh, so the county comes in and I didn't catch it in time, but, uh, and I always thought the property was worth, it was on the 100 block, it was a duplex, we rented it out, I kinda always thought it was about a $22,000, $23,000 property, so, so I decided, well, I think I'm gonna sell this property and, and I asked my office manager, I said, what is the tax value? She says, well, we got it here, she says, it's $48,000 now. And I said, no, 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 no. I says, can't be, right? So I immediately called up the county and said, no, you gotta, you gotta revalue this. I says, you are so far out of the ballpark here that, that you're just not right. So she said I'd be happy to come down, have a look, you know, so she comes down, takes a look, she goes, oh yeah, I missed a bunch of stuff here, she says, I'm way off. And I said, well, we, we need to lower this. She said, well, we can't lower it this year, because you have until June the 3rd to, to, what's the right terminology, to protest the...
Even if she made a mistake?
Even though they made a mistake, you cannot change it. So that was June the 6th. So June the 3rd was the final date that I could actually go to the county and protest the, with the yellow papers, we all get it the first of the year, we all read those, because if you want to, if you want to protest, you have a certain timer, so. So anyway, she says, yeah, she says, well, we can lower it down to probably 26,000 or 28,000. I said, well, what happens in the interim here? She says, well, you're just gonna have to pay the tax. I said, well, I'm selling the property either way, and I'm telling you what, it's gonna sell at 22,000. So we listed it at 28, not one person. So, uh, the property eventually sold at 21,500, which is right where it should be. So, so somebody's off here, the county can say what they want, okay? The market value in Virginia is what market value in Virginia is, right? I always kidded, I said, I bought a house in Virginia that's $60,000, I put another $80,000 into it and it's still worth $60,000, right? I mean, that's just the way it is here, right? Um, and maybe it's worth 80 and the county's right and they got it market value at 83, but the reality is, I don't think when the county comes in that, that they understand market value in Virginia. So, anyway, I just thought that was a good example of what's happening here, right? So I'm still not in agreement with the 6% and how it's happening in Virginia.
Well, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay. Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Paulson.
Thank you. I'm just looking at this sheet again, and I'm only seeing on one line on the estimated market value of $50,000, that there's a year 2019 to be able to compare it to the 2020 proposed.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't follow down, like 75,000, what was it in year 2019 to the proposed? Is that just a typo?
It's very possible a typo, Julian.
Yeah, that, that should be 2000.
But it follows all the way down the column.
It should be 2019, Counselor Paulson.
2019.
All the way down.
All the way down.
So that's where I was getting a little confused, so...
Yep.
Sheri, does this include this sheet, the homestead credit or not?
It says classification homestead on this.
Yeah, it does. So this is with the homestead credit.
This is for the homestead credit.
This, my taxes are for a value that they've got my market value, it's way up, so there's something screwed up with this sheet.
So the reason I was asking that, if I may continue...
Yes, please.
Is, um, Mr. Patrini, when you had mentioned what they had gone up, and I don't know if you have that sheet there, do you guys have that sheet? So if you're in that bracket and if you go to the first column, it says 2020 proposed, but it's supposed to be 2019, was that the correct tax that you would have paid in 2019 or, or 2000?
About 15.
So that's different than what this proposed sheet is saying the difference should be is where I'm, what I'm getting at.
Your home is valued at about, was it 253? Right.
But when you look at the year, the, the difference, it's, from what it says the 2019 estimate or estimate was, um, to the 2020 proposed, it's a lot higher. I guess I'm just trying to understand how they're calculating this, if they're giving you brackets, but if you really didn't fall within that bracket, if your, if your home was valued at 75,000 in 2019, your estimated tax at, at that time would have been $624, and then it supposedly, just in 2020, estimated tax going up to $714, but it appears that that, most people that are coming before us today are saying that it's a lot higher than what's on this sheet. So this, this sheet, I don't know how, how accurate it was to give to us if it's not, if it's not the actual or realistic numbers that people are seeing they're being taxed on. So I guess I'd like some more clarification on that as well.
You know, and I think, and to follow up on what you say, Counselor Paulson, you have, you have a, a house valued at $50,000, and this is 2019, this is what you were paying approximately 311, and now the proposed for that same property is, goes up to 372, but the valuation of the property was instead $50,000, it went from $50,000, say, to $100,000, and to look at how much more money you're paying, right? I mean, i- i- it makes no sense. I have a one-bedroom house up in Midway, no finished basement, detached garage, my property value is $185,000, around approximately, and my taxes go from 27 something to 3,300 and some dollars, and, and, and the value never changed. So, I mean, I don't understand the formula that's being used by the county, and I know we're, we're bribing the county a little bit, but I think, I think it's deserved. Uh, I think we never got a, an explanation that's satisfactory, and you're not getting an explanation that's satisfactory, because we don't know, I don't understand the formula that the county uses for these substantial increases, other than the fact that they're saying, well, uh, the evaluations are old, they're five years old or older, so we're gonna evaluate it from what was five years ago, we're gonna jump it all the way up right now. I, you know, right? And so if that's the case, if, if that's their argument, if that's exactly what they're doing, that doesn't make any sense. That's a huge burden on the taxpayer. It should be done incrementally over time in order to help people make an adjustment to that. And to Mr. Patrini's argument is that the taxes should be a commensurate or should be reasonable and prudent. And I think when the city ran it, and that when the county took over, they agreed that we were reasonable and prudent, we were within that percentile. So by raising it substantially now, to your argument, Counselor Paulson, is, is, is too much too soon. It should be incremental over time. In other words, so if that's the case, then if that's the argument, then maybe five more years they evaluate it, five more years. Well, their, their argument was that we're gonna do it, we're not gonna reassess your property for five years, which they didn't do, for the most part, I mean, really come out and assess. You still got increases for the property, for the county levy, and for the city levy, and for the school levy. You all got those increases every year, but now they're substantially higher. Why? Because they're adding on each year more, they think that was worth more in year one, two, three, and four, and now you weren't paying that, we're gonna jack it up one, just at one time. That doesn't make any sense. Counselor Freedley?
The county officials are in the hallway. Are they uninvited to have an explanation on behalf of the city?
Well, what did they, what did they tell you, Brett?
They legally can't attend our truth and taxation meeting.
And I, I just talked to them, Larry, or Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If there's anybody else that wants to talk to them in, in the room, they should go do that, because they are going to leave if nobody has anymore to talk to them about. So just gonna give you the information. You can still come back in here and complain, but they just asked me if I'd pass that message on.
Okay, does anybody else have anything, they want to come up and talk or have a vent or, or, you know, give us the business, because I think we deserve it? I mean, the county has put us in this precarious position and I wish we had some... Sir?
Go on.
Good.
I'm Matt Puringer.
Matt, we met you earlier.
What's that?
I met you earlier in my office, thanks for coming in.
I'm a business owner in this town and many other towns in the Iron Range. Um, just to elaborate more on Robert's perfect storm situation, that's what I see happening in this town. Only where we kind of, you know, put up against the wall with the steam conversions, a lot of homeowners, right? Without this tax increase, there's gonna be a lot of vacant houses that aren't gonna put up. They're not gonna do it. Why put a $20,000 heating, um, system in a $25,000 house? A lot of vacant houses, a lot of them. I've talked to several realtors, bankers, they all foresee the same thing. It's a real problem. And, um, to tax them out of this town too, that's another problem, businesses. You know, the only thing that, um, I own rental properties in the town. My conversions and my property tax increases.
Yeah, you have, you have to pass it on.
Pass that on to the customer or anybody. It gets passed on. And with these, I have some properties that went up 200%. A lot of contradictions. Because I don't really feel like they're gonna get answered. Because I've gone to the, you know, I've talked to auditors, I've talked to assessors for the past two weeks, and they say, well, look where, look where your, um, increases went up substantially and talk to them. So that's why I'm here, I went to your office, and I, I mean, it's frustrating, but, and I, I fight for the tenant, because they get hurt, you know? But they have bills I have to pay too, just like business owner, just like an electrician or plumber, you know? You kind of look at investment property owners as people who, sale of the property once, you know, stuff's... I don't have another job, it's my job.
So the city portion of the taxes?[1767.51] So the city portion of the taxes? There's one thing the city, we can do as a city. When the county says, come and see the city about your taxes, there is one thing we can do. We could take this 6% levy proposed that we have, and we can reduce it to zero, which is $295,148 that's spread over the 4,800 homes that are in town, 400 properties. So we can do that, which would reduce your property, not, taxes, not a lot. So when the county says, come and talk to the city, well, we can do our part and reduce the levy by saying from 6% to zero, well, make adjustments to the budget and some significant adjustments, but that's the way life is. But it's not going to substantially affect the property tax values that the county levied, I mean, levied that, signed.
You know, slight increments, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I've got duplex on a corner of Fourth and Fourth. No garage, old duplex, old roof, old windows, old siding. Nice inside, you know? And that thing went up 238%, $1,200 a year. Lot of money. And then I throw a steam conversion on top of that, which is about $170 a month, and I'm paying for that. Probably making about $150 to $200 a month on that place.
Well, that doesn't cover your maintenance costs.
It does not. If I need a new fridge, well, didn't make any money for two months, you know? It's just, that's, and I'm not the only one that's having that problem, you know? That's, homeowners are having that problem, too. But I think a lot of people are just, they think that this is just affecting homeowners and property owners. It's not. It's going to affect renters, too. And there's a lot of renters in this town, a lot of them. And they, I mean, a lot of good renters, okay? They, they work, they, they work, you know, all over town. So they're needed, you know? I'm needed. Business owners are needed. Homeowners are needed. But pretty easy to, kind of enticing to go somewhere else sometimes.
Well, thank you. The decision that we're going to make today is about the levy. So we're going to, we're going to have to talk about the levy, and whether we're going to keep it at 6% or lower it. Of course, we cannot increase it. Why would we? Well, we're going to have to make an adjustment if we're going to lower it. So that's going to be the, the question we have at the end of this meeting. So, Mr. Thomas? And then, sir, then you come up after? Thank you.
Thank you. And we're back to their proposal here. And, and you're absolutely correct. So you had a $75,000 house that went up 20%, perhaps with the, so your tax went from 324 to 624 city. My question is, and then you put a 6% levy on top of that, I mean, when do you get the, when does the city receive the other $300 that is going to happen in the proposed 2020 budget? So if your budget right now...
Or we don't get it till 2021.
If your budget right now is, is whatever it was, 26 million, whatever it happened to be, and...
There was an expenditure, yeah.
And you wanted to increase, and we're going to say the average is over 4,500 houses, $100, just because it's easy for me to do the math that way. So in 2020, according to the paperwork that is produced here, our tax, the proposed city would be $324, and however, it's going to increase to $642, right? So that $300 is coming to the city of Virginia at some point, right?
Our maximum, our maximum levy amount is what we'll get. Not an additional $350 that you additionally paid.
The 6% of it.
The maximum levy amount is all we can get. So that means you're going up $300, somebody else is going down $300. It's a two, it's a two-sit.
I understand that, but, but still, it is a difference of $300, right?
Right, right.
Okay? And, and just because that market value went up, nobody did anything except that the market value went up, and the city is going to receive $300 more.
Not, no, nothing above the levy. Levy is the levy, and that's what's set. Levy doesn't go up automatically because your value went up or your taxes went up. That doesn't increase the levy for us.
Bob, we don't get a windfall. We don't get a windfall.
No, no.
Okay. Well, it would have been nice if you...
It just means that somebody else went down.
It certainly would have been nice if you did.
Right. It would have been really nice if we did, but that doesn't happen that way.
Yeah, if we got the money, it'd be fantastic.
Thank you. I'm just as confused as I was when I walked in the door, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Sir? Uh, would you please state your name for the record? Thank you, and welcome.
Tim Carlson.
Mr. Carlson, good evening.
Hi. So, you know, I kind of anticipated this storm brewing thing a few years ago. So I stopped buying properties here in Virginia and now I'm buying others, because I knew this was happening or about to happen. And so I'm fully aware of what he's talking about with the storm, with the steam conversions, with all the school ta, you know, levies, and, and now the 6% thing. But I guess just going back to the county assessor situation, I bought a house in Evolith about three months ago, and I bought it for 30,000, it's valued at 80,000 on tax. So I called them, because I know I can't probably adjust that taxes for next year, but probably for the following year. They refused to come and look at the property. They said I had to wait until spring. And I might have a renter in there at that time, and I just don't want to inconvenience the renter. I, I value renters probably higher than myself at some points, which is not a good thing, but, so anyway, you know, what they're doing is not kosher on many different angles.
And you make, you made, you made the, you made the comparison that it's not just happening in Virginia, it's happening in Evolith, too.
With the county assessor.
With the county assessor, right.
Totally. So, I don't know, maybe I should sell everything and be your new assessor. I can't possibly screw it up any further. I don't know. So, maybe, I don't know.
I, I think, I think that would be a true and accurate statement.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm halfway serious. I, I don't know. Um, I guess, you know, this makes me sick that I have to raise people's rent. And I have at least three renters that work at Walmart. They are not qualified to get any tax or subsidies because they make too much, and they just, you know, they're paying their way. And they struggle every month to give me rent. So for me to even increase by $25 a month is a lot, and I have to do it. So, um, as for the 6%, which is what we're talking about, the levy, you know, we're all getting squeezed here. If you guys could somehow help, that would be... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Anyone else that'd like to come up and say something? Have any questions, comments from the, from the audience? Anybody from the council? Counselor Bearbo?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Sherry, I need to stand corrected on that sheet that you passed out from the county individuals. I made a phone call to my house. They're missing, this just has to do with the actual taxes, not the special extra levies and stuff that are on your tax bill, like the school levies and stuff. This is just the actual property tax portion on there. So there's additional costs that you don't see on that sheet. So that sheet is right that Sherry passed out.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Bearbo. Counselor Barnzelli?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I don't know where to start first, but when they, let's just say the assessor that comes up, nobody sees him, because he comes to the house when no one's there. But when they left Duluth, I don't know how many came up to do Virginia, or how many times they've came up. Can't do it in one day, obviously. I like to think that, let's just say they took three, three assessors out of the, out of the Duluth office. Well, we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks. We'll come back with about $18 million from the city of Virginia. Okay, so what if we, it was five years, what if you divide that number by five? What would it come, would it come down? Because they knew we didn't pay for five years, or we didn't do very much increase to our homeowners.
Well, I think we did, Counselor Barnzelli, in, in, in three areas. The school levy went up, the city Virginia levy went up, and the county levy went up, without your property taxes being reass, without your property reassessed every year.
But we never got this big, uh...
No.
But, a whack.
And we peel away the onion, what does it come down to? Valuation. That's what it comes down to. Way overvalued, these properties, in my humble opinion. I think in the opinion of everybody else, way too high. Now, we, we have a responsibility as a city, right? And what we're doing, our diligence with our budget moving forward. We have no control over the valuations, and I think that the valuations are way out of line. They should be more incremental. That's just my personal perspective. I'm sorry I did interrupt you. Please continue.
But Mayor, also, that we have to do our streets this summer, Dr. Counsel. That's what we need, we can get that money. That's what I'm saying, where it's...
No, that's, that won't start until 2021.
This summer?
No, 2021.
A year from, a year from January.
January.
We're not...
No. No.
No.
Next year, yep. Another year, yep. Yes, Counselor Johnson?
So, um, when, when we look at our budget, and we look at the, that 295,148, that's, doing the math, dividing it, it's 1.7% of that portion of our budget. That, so, so what I took is I took the 16, 8, 2, 1, 504, and divided it by the general levy increase, which is what we're discussing here tonight, right? That comes out to just be a small percentage. So when it, when it comes down to it, our budget is, we're not really way out of line on asking for extra stuff. So, so the levy of the 6% that brings us into what we need to do to run the city.
City staff was very, very cognizant this year, knowing that we were going to have some budget issues. We have almost zero capital for the first time ever in 20 years. We're not buying anything. No vehicles, no, nothing next year.
And part of the way we're managing that is by leasing vehicles.
Correct.
Because the maintenance and other things, when we lease a vehicle, is included in the lease. So we're actually saving money on the day-to-day operation by, by leasing vehicles, and our mechanic staff are working on vehicles we own. And so we're, we're actually utilizing our resources better by leasing vehicles.
Additionally, I'd like to give a shout out to the employees that did choose to change insurance programs, which was a huge benefit and savings for us. And there was a great effort on the staff's part to try to assist the city in reducing costs for this next coming year.
So when it comes down to the 2020 budget, we really are doing our diligence in trying to keep that number as low as possible. I, I guess I will move that we set the levy at the proposed 6%.
Moved by Counselor Johnson to set the levy for 2020 at 6%, which equates to $295,148, is their support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli. Is there any future, any further discussion? Anyone? Anyone from the audience? No, this is a public hearing. It's a meeting.
It is a meeting, yes.
We could, we, we certainly can vote on it, yes. Yes, we can. It's not a closed meeting. Part of our public hearing. Okay, so you're contesting the, the motion?
Yeah, I'm contesting that this was advertised as a tax, truth in taxation hearing. You can't vote at a hearing, you have to vote at a public meeting, at the council meeting. Got to close, got to close the public hearing first. Truth in taxation hearing. Then we go back to our, our, our suspended council meeting, that's where you vote on it.
Well, and this, who, who made the motion?
For the sake of argument, may I withdraw my, my motion.
We sent the motion, we sent the second, then we'll close the, we'll, we'll adjourn the public hearing, we'll go back to the city council and make a vote, even though we're in a public hearing. We voted on it last year, same way. So, okay, that's what we'll do. So there's no motion on the floor, there's no second.
I don't remember us doing it that way last year.
Yes, we did.
Or we shouldn't have.
I will move to close the truth in taxation hearing.
A move by Counselor Johnson to close the truth in taxation hearings, their support? Support by Counselor Bearbo, was there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. We will re, we will re-adjourn, I mean, we will re-convene, excuse me, the city council meeting. And before we go to item nine and committee reports, at the truth in taxation meeting that we just held, there was a discussion about the levy and setting levy, and we currently have a proposal levy of 6%. What is the council's privilege here, pleasure?
I will move the recommended, recommended levy increase of 6%.
A move by Counselor Johnson to set the levy for 2020 at 6%, which equates to $295,148 increase in, in levy. Is there a second to that? Do I have a second? Supported by Counselor Paulson at the last momento. Okay, is there any further discussion on this matter? I just have one. Yes, setting, setting the levy is prudent for us to do, so it's, it's what our staff worked really hard on. It's hard for me to swallow this moving forward, because, you know, we're just, you know, it's not that we're piling on. It's the fact that, as Mr. Thomas said, and, and Mr. Ginko and others, this is a perfect storm. And we have a lot of burden on the city, our residents and the businesses, lots of burden. And so, I mean, 6% is not a lot of money, but at the same time, you know, I think we need to set an example in some way. Counselor Friedle?
I just want to state the fact that I would be supportive of it in practicality, but I need to oppose this in principle.
Ditto. Okay, so it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to point out something that...
Yes.
The surplus that's projected is based on the enterprise, that meaning that we have no changes in the enterprise funds.
Right.
So if you read your budget, that would mean that we got a payment for the hospital, which we are not, we are not projecting to get.
Yeah, we don't know that, right?
We don't know that.
Right.
Um, storm sewer fees, sewer, sanitary sewer fees, all those fees, garbage fees, nothing would change. That means everything would have to remain the same.
Right.
If that doesn't happen, we are not going to have that surplus that was mentioned previously.
And I think that was clearly explained by Sherry to me this afternoon. Sherry, our finance director, do you have another comment?
Yeah, um, and this is my apologies, I do not have resolution, so can we get them waived? And we also have to set the budget, so there'll be another motion for that.
Okay, so we, if we approve the levy, we have to make a motion to set the budget and waive the resolution? We don't have one?
Uh, we didn't have one with us, so you, what you say is you waive the written resolution. You say that.
Would that be before we make the decision to increase the levy?
If Counselor Johnson does not oppose, he can make that part of his motion.
I would amend my motion accordingly.
Okay. Would you please read the motion back? Pam? Pam, would you please read the motion?
I have right now, at the levy at 6%.
And waive the written resolution.
And approve the, yep.
Waive the written resolution.
And waive the written resolution. Okay, that is the motion. And that was the motion made by Counselor Johnson, and as the amended support, is that correct? Amended support by Counselor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Bearbo?
Aye.
Lee? Paulson?
Yes.
Yandich? Johnson?
Yes.
Terrence Ellie?
Yes.
Puffy?
Based on staff's recommendation, aye. Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, committee, the whole meeting that was held on December 3, 2000. Now we got to approve the budget. I thought that was in that motion.
That was the levy.
I will move to approve the budget as presented by staff.
Okay, move by Counselor Johnson, approve the budget as presented by staff. Is there support?
All support.
Support by... Support by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Do we have to waive the resolution for that, too? And with that, waive the written resolution? Waive any written resolution? Right? Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion there? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Pam. Okay, now we'll go to committee reports. Committee of the whole meeting, nine point one, that was held on December third, two thousand nineteen. We'll turn this part of the city council meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the agenda of the December third, two thousand nineteen committee of the whole meeting was the purchase agreement with the Joint Powers Board of ISD seven oh six. This is for the school project and the purchase of the White Cedar Drive property. It was moved and supported to continue with that purchase agreement.
And is this a second reading?
This is the first reading.
First reading, okay.
Second reading has to be ten days after today.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
We'll have to talk about, we're going to address that.
Okay, we'll do that. So, this is the first reading. What is the council's?
Also, also move the first reading.
Councilor, Councilor Bearbo was the first reading of the purchase agreement with Joint Powers Board of IDS seven oh six, and supported by Councilor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Silver was present at the meeting to discuss the professional services contract with our golf professional, Steve Fingerooz. He had brought forward an agreement from April first, twenty twenty, through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. It was moved and supported to approve this agreement for Mr. Fingerooz, starting on April first, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Is there a motion moved to approve by Councilor Johnson? Is there support?
All support.
Yeah, supported by Councilor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Quick comment or question? Brian, thank you very much for the hard work on moving this contract together. All the employees that are involved are amenable?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
City staff had received RFP's request for proposals for legal services for 2020. We have made a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Trenti Law Firm as the city attorney for general affairs for the city of Virginia for 2020.
Moved by Councilor Johnson to approve the Trenti Law Firm as the city attorney for the civil matters?
General legal.
General legal counsel. Is there support? Support by Councilor Freedley. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve appointing Colosmo Patchen and Carney as our criminal attorney, or I should say, continue the contract with Colosmo Patchen and Carney as our criminal attorney for the city of Virginia for 2020.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councilor Paulson for approval for the Colosmo Patchen Carney Criminal Attorney for the city of Virginia for 2020. Is there support?
All support.
Support by Councilor Biondich and Councilor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
He had discussed setting a special city council meeting on December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, at 5:00 PM, in lieu of a regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting.
And this is, this is classified as a special meeting. Thank you.
We have to wait ten days for the school. Can we move it to the, what day is the twentieth? I don't have my calendar.
Yes, the Friday.
As it would seem to be redundant to have a special meeting on the seventeenth, and then another one on the twentieth or later, with the purpose of needing to finalize the purchase for the school to help meet their timelines before the end of the calendar year is my understanding.
Would suggest maybe the twenty-third, Monday, the twenty-third?
I'm not around. It's too close to the holiday for me, but you can still have it.
Friday the twentieth will work, too.
I don't have a problem with the Friday.
So, the question about having it Friday, the twentieth, can we have it in the daytime? In the morning? Or is that a problem for you, Councilor Paulson? Could we do it in the morning? Have a council meeting in the morning?
I would be fine with the morning.
Everybody okay with the morning? Make proper notice to make sure we put in bold letters when we advertise in the morning? Eight o'clock?
Eight-thirty, yeah.
I would move an eight-fifteen meeting on the twentieth to special meeting.
D. Yeah. Under nine point one D, we're setting a special council meeting for December seventeenth, is now been moved by Councilor Johnson and supported by Councilor Paulson to not set the date for December seventeenth, two thousand nineteen, but to set the council meeting for eight-fifteen AM on Friday, December twentieth.
Correct.
Correct? Motion and support for that. Is there any further discussion, Councilor Bearbo?
This original one on the seventeenth was going to be a combination committee and the whole council meeting, so now we added a third thing to it.
No, same thing. Same one. We're just moving it from the seventeenth to the twentieth.
Okay, that's fine, then.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, it's Councilor Paulson.
I guess I need a clarification on the meeting on the seventeenth. Didn't we have two separate times, one for Essentia? Oh, it was just?
Yeah, that's at nine AM.
So, we have one at nine?
Yep.
On the seventeen, nine in the morning on the seventeenth.
Okay, and then one at eight.
On the twentieth.
On the eight fifteen on the twentieth.
Okay. The one at nine on the seventeenth is strictly only regarding negotiations with Essentia.
So, that actually will work much better for me. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Fantastic. Good, that's good. So, we're all set. It's been moved and supported to set the council meeting date for eight-fifteen AM on Friday, December the twentieth. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
That is all I have from that meeting, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The item nine point two is the Personnel Committee of the Whole that was held on December nine, two thousand nineteen. Item A is Park and Rec Staffing.
In your, I handed it out today. We did approve hiring our figure skating coaches. Resolution is in your packet, or was handed out today on your desk.
Yeah, the resolutions were handed out by hand this evening. So, there's a resolution in your packet to approve the park and recreation staffing for, can we approve all these at once? Or they have to be separate?
Two different resolutions. The skating coaches are a different resolution than the other one.
Okay, so the park and rec staffing is a resolution moving forward with that.
The figure skating coaches was the first resolution.
Right, first resolution for the figure skating coaches. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the resolution hiring Jenna Brown, Kristy Westover, Abby Hochul, Britt Anderson, and Haley Shaffbauer as skating coaches.
Thank you. Is there support? Support by Councilor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And then nine point two B is the resolution authoring the hiring of additional park and rec assistants to abuse for staffing the warming shacks around the skating rink and use to also staff the concessions at the minors.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councilor Paulson to approve those hirings and supported by Council Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson?
Oh, no.
All of the in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
And the final resolution was authorized in the hire of a single role EMT, Emily Berg. Intention upon background check and successful physical.
I will move the hiring of the EMTs as it is a budgeted item, and we are below the maximum budget.
Thank you. Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Mayor, I do have one other item that I was remiss in getting on the agenda.
Okay, very good.
From the Planning and Zoning Commission, they had granted an extension to Lee Gorsha to finish his items.
Yes.
And we need to approve that extension, according to state law, actually.
Okay, so I'm assuming engineering was on standby there, too, so?
Yes.
So, there's a?
It's the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to authorize it, given Lee Gorsha at seven-twenty Second Street South, an extension regarding his violations of the property maintenance.
And the extension is for how long?
Till January first, twenty twenty.
Okay, to January first of twenty twenty. Well, that's?
Not very long.
That's close, so. A request approval by Planning and Zoning to extend Lee Gorsha's permit to complete the projects as proposed and recommended by our city staff, and I'm sure engineering was there, so I'm looking for approval for that, that extension to January of twenty twenty.
I will move the extension.
Moved by Councilor Johnson and supported by Councilor Freedley. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Britt. We'll move to item ten, Commission Lee's on Department heads reports. Does anybody have a report from the council they'd like to give this evening? Councilor Bearbo?
I just have a quick mention. They had a special Public Utilities meeting the other day, just for a discussion of budget. I gave proposed budget. I gave Britt copies of both entities. She is going to forward that to all councils. Their request is, if you see anything you want to have adjusted, the finalization of that budget will be the twenty-third of December, their regular Public Utilities meeting. So, get the information to Mr. French before then.
Okay, I think they also are going to have a special meeting to grant an extension to the Miners Memorial Building to continue with steam service until twenty twenty. Craig Zagg, was that part of that as well? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Well, Councilor Bearbo, any other council that have a committee report they'd like to give? Councilor Barneselli?
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate Brian. It's his one-year anniversary.
It is. Today is his one-year anniversary. As our park and rectory, congratulations.
He survived a year.
No speech?
No hair loss?
Already lost the hair before.
Well, congratulations on your one-year anniversary. Yep. Thank you, Councilor Barneselli. Okay.
Mayor, I do have one item also.
Yes.
I would like to let everybody know that the Planning and Zoning Commission is considering the chicken ordinance, and they will be discussing it again at their January meeting, which is scheduled for January sixth, twenty twenty. So, if you have an opinion on the chicken ordinance in Virginia, it would be wise to attend that meeting and let them hear your voice, what you think.
Well, I'm looking forward to their recommendation, one way or the other.
What date is that?
January sixth.
January sixth.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Been a long meeting. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work and your patience moving forward with this Truth and Taxation Hearing. It is a challenge for us, so thank you for everybody for professionalism you always displayed throughout the year. So, it's been, you know, a challenging year. This is a challenging meeting, but we're moving forward. So, I have one item I'd like to bring forth, and I've been asked to do this. The Alcott Botanical Greenhouse's annual Christmas Open House is a three-day event, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Friday, December thirteenth, from four to eight PM, live music by Justin LaFquest and Tim Nelson, Trainwreck, and Horse Fees. Massage chair by Amasage, would that be good? Beer and wine will also be available for purchase from the tap house. I wonder if you can drink a beer and get a massage at the same time. That'd be heaven, wouldn't it? So, then on Saturday, it's Family Day, horse-drawn wagon rides by Strawberry Fields from noon to three, and kids' activities from one to three. Again, horse-drawn wagon rides and kids' activity, Saturday, December fourteenth, from noon to six PM. And then on Sunday, to cap off, the Botanical Gardens Open House from the Alcott Park Greenhouse, Sunday, December fifteenth, from noon to four. Tour the beautiful greenhouse filled with Christmas lights and blooming plants. So, all free to the public with snacks, flowers, and fun. So, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, December thirteenth, four to eight. Saturday, December fourteenth, twelve to six. And Sunday, December fifteenth, twelve to four, at the Alcott Botanical Greenhouse Annual Christmas Open House. And if you haven't been there, you should go, because it's a great event. So, thank you, everybody. Does anybody have anything else before we adjourn for the evening? Pam?
I just want to remind the councilors of the Rams Annual Meeting next Thursday, December nineteenth, if you're signed up.
Thank you. Very good. Rams Dinner, December nineteenth, Thursday.
Cost, cost is zero.
Cost is zero. Thank you very much.
And I can assure?
Yes, Councilor Freedley?
I can assure everybody there are absolutely no hard feelings with regard to any decisions that were made tonight. It's what it is.
It is what it is. We come to a consensus. We maintain a professional decorum, as we always do, and the vote is the vote. Now, Councilor Barneselli, did you have your light on? Now I see that it's off. Okay. Did you have something before?
I wanted, I wanted to say how, how our guys do snow removal. Ed and his crew did an excellent job. They do every time there's a snow, snow flood.
Well, you can say that, snow flood.
Because we're flooded with snow, no question about that.
They, we have some good, knock wood, we have a good bunch of workers that's working for the city of Virginia. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barneselli. Councilor Biondich? Do you have something?
I do. I also would like to thank everybody on the council, and I agree with Mr. Freedley. And we often can agree to disagree and still work together, and I appreciate that, being on the council, that we can leave here knowing we do the best that we can do. So, thank you.
I want to tack on to Councilor Barneselli's snow thing, because the crews came through the alleys a second time today and widened them all out, because they were getting awful narrow for vehicles. And they came through today and pushed them way out, so I appreciate that, since I parked in the alley, in my house, in my parking lot.
Thank you. Now, we have, you have something else, Councilor Barneselli? Turn on your light. The party's not over.
I want to remind Councilor Biondich, it's like being married, being at the council. You got to, you got to work with each other, whether you like it or not, right? And you can go out the door mumbling to yourself.
Thank you, Councilor Barneselli. Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Barneselli. Okay, quickly, quickly, Sherri?
I can't top that. I do just want to thank everybody. This budget particularly was real tough, and I am not happy. I know I'm not a citizen of Virginia, but I live here, live here practically. I shop here. I work here, and my bank is here. And I feel your pain, and I will keep sharpening the pencil.
Well, we do what we can do, but, you know, some things are out of our control, and our citizens are being burdened, overburdened with a lot of things. And, you know, like you said, we feel their pain, and, you know, it doesn't really console, you know, the result that they have to experience, so it's unfortunate. All right. Does anybody else have something before we adjourn? Stand adjourned. Till eight-fifteen AM on the twentieth of December. Thank you, everybody.